Sunny Side Electric.
Hi, half my outlets stopped working.
I got a new bread maker. Have you tried for capture?
My outlets don't work.
Oh, no toasties for you.
I should have called Frank Gay.
I bet they don't have a bread maker.
I'm calling Frank Gay.
When your power goes out, don't settle for half-baked electrical service. Call the pros who fix it fast. That's the Frank Gay way.
That's the Frank Gay way.
FrankGayServices.com.
I'm Ultima Morgan of Morgan &amp; Morgan. Every time one of my children started driving, it was terrifying. I am quite aware of the dangers being on the road. Thousands of accidents happen across the country. We see it every day. These families' lives will be changed in an instant. We fight for these families as if they were our own. We've become America's largest injury law firm by winning cases just like these. If you've been injured in a car accident, call us.
Injured? Dial pound law or visit ForThePeople.com for an office near you.
We'll go ahead and call to order the meeting of Sanford City Commission for Monday, September 8th, 2025.
Can't hear you.
Everyone's attention, please.
Can't hear you. Yeah, but can't hear you.
Okay. Now, can you hear me? Can you turn me up? Or I'll just talk really loud?
Sounds good.
Okay. So, we'll call to order the meeting of Sanford City Commission for Monday, September 8th, 2025. We are going to be having a capacity issue here. And our police chief and fire chief will be addressing that. We may have to have some people wait outside. I apologize for that. And if you had wanted to fill out one of the yellow forms, we ran out of those. But you will have an opportunity to speak even if you did not fill one of those out. We'll start with our legislative prayer led by Ministers Stargena Lawrence of the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can, please rise.
Let us bow our head. Father God, in the name of Jesus, I thank you right now, Lord God, for we have come to reason together. As we thank you, Lord God, for every issue that has been addressed already, Lord God, and resolved, we thank you right now, Lord God, for those that will arise. We thank you right now, Lord God, for peace being still. We thank you right now, Lord God, for everything that we need to resolve these problems we met, whether it be money, medical, or man. And, Lord God, I lift up each citizen here, each resident. I lift up the city officials, oh God, I lift up law enforcement. And, Lord, even our city manager in his moments of arrhythmia. It's in Jesus' master's name that I pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Minister. All right, we have with us tonight Senator Jason Broder, who's going to bring us a quick update on state legislation. Senator Broder. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I know nobody's here to hear me, so we're going to do it real quick. This year, we had $115 billion budget, which was $2.5 billion less than previous years. And so even though we know it's tight, we have managed to have a smaller budget. We were in extended session this year, but it's for a reason that I don't think any other state has ever had. We were arguing over how to give money back to taxpayers. So here's what we settled on. We gave, we completely eliminated the business rent sales, lease tax, which we're the only state in America that had it. It had been 7% and every year for the last 10, 15 years, we've cut it a quarter point every year. This year, we were able to pay off the last 2%, making us the 50th and final state to not have a business rent tax. That's going to be great news to everybody that owns a business, as well as all those that go to our small business owners who rent. We also know that how popular some of our sales tax holidays are. And so over the years, we've had a number of different ones. We've had back-to-school, we've had tolls, we've had gas, we've had hurricane preparedness. But it's sometimes hard to know when those are because we tend to do them two weeks before school starts. Well, school starts on a different date every year. And sometimes it's Sunday is two weeks out. You don't know whether it's open. And so this year, we finally put it in statute, so we're not guessing anymore. The entire month of August will be back-to-school sales tax holiday from here on out. So you don't have to worry about anything. Back-to-school is all of August. Similarly, we have so many folks that are moving to the state and want to prepare for hurricanes that our hurricane preparedness tax holiday was always two weeks before the start of hurricane season. Well, you first got to figure out hurricane season starts June 1st. And if you go two weeks back to that, it may have 30 or 31 days and how many? Forget it. So this year, we said, we're just going to make the hurricane sales tax holiday year-round. So no matter when somebody moves here or when a storm is coming, if you've missed the window, it no longer matters. If you see something happen in the Atlantic a month from now and you forgot batteries or flashlight or whatever, it's all going to be tax-free from here on out. We also decided that, starting today through the end of the year, we have a hunting, fishing, and camping sales tax holiday. So for tents and ammunition and everything to go enjoy the outdoors, we will be doing that as well for the rest of the year. Lastly, we decided to take the money and start paying down some of our debt. We have very little debt in the state of Florida, but it's only on asset-backed projects like roads and schools and things like that. We are on track now with $250 million extra a year going to our debt payoff to be one of the first states, if not the first state in American history, to be debt-free in the next 10 to 15 years if we keep up the pace. And so, very fiscally conservative legislative session that focused entirely on resident tax relief, sales tax, and business rent tax, and all that kind of stuff. By silo, I'll go through what some of the budget items were that we were able to bring back to the community, the things we worked on together, either through the county or the city. We were able to get another $400,000 this year for juvenile drug court. That's not always a guaranteed thing. That helps expedite those cases here. We got money for Stop Now Plan for duly-served youth, so for those that are in juvenile justice and Medicaid. We got revert and reappropriate the Seminole County Sheriff's Office for mobile command equipment. And so we had $500,000 for that, and it didn't get fully spent last year, so we were able to maintain it and retain it. We got $75,000 for the Seminole County Foundation for Public Schools, which was great. We also got $10 million for Seminole State College for the nursing building. We all know healthcare's been a big crunch, and Seminole State's been providing a lot of that. And they needed a new building. We were able to do that. We got money, almost half a million dollars, for Inspire, for Operation Giving Real Opportunities for those of us that have folks that are adult, disabled. This is a great program. Mental Health Association of Central Florida Mental Health Clinic for the uninsured, we got $125,000. Hope &amp; Healing Recovery Center for opioid addiction, we got $1 million. Empower Substance Abuse and Mistreatment, $500,000. And for here locally, we got $2.5 million for the Sanford Nutrient Reduction at Lake Jessup and Lake Monroe. And so as we continue to look at this being right in between the two biggest water bodies in this section of the St. Johns, a giant help from the state for nutrient reduction. We also got $1 million for Sanford Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Vehicle Replacement out at the airport, and so they'll be able to get a new truck there. And then $15 million for Lake Jessup Restoration Water Quality Management. We have, for years, been trying to restore Lake Jessup. I can give a two-hour dissertation on the last 100 years of Lake Jessup's history. And we really need to, in order to have that go back to being an active fishing destination, address the nutrient load that's in there. And so this $15 million will go a long way towards making that what it was in the '40s and '50s when there were four or five fish camps on it, people used to vacation there. And then we got another million and a half bucks for the Seminole County Little Wakiba River Sedimentation Basin, which was, years ago, ended up becoming a problem in flooding, and we're trying to restore that water body as well. Any questions? I'm happy to, and I've met a dozen people today, so if you don't want to do it tonight, I'm happy, just call. I'm happy to chat whenever. Mayor knows that I'm good for, whenever you got an email or something, I'm happy to turn it around.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Appreciate that, Senator, and I'm happy to hear everything you've been telling us so far. I do have a question.
Sure.
Would you be willing, and I think you might have seen the letter I sent to you, would you be willing to try and do something to support the fact that our vaccinations, many of them are in state law, and it's up to the legislation to protect that?
A thousand percent. I'm the only legislator that has a master's degree in public health. And so the statute says that you must have polio, measles, mumps, rubella, and pertussis, which is whooping cough, comma, and all other diseases that the Department of Health recommends for. The Department of Health has discretion, and has always had discretion, as to what all those other ones are. And so in my view, unless and until there's new clinical evidence, and that's a Phase III clinical trial that has a good design, double-blind, placebo-controlled, that says that these are no longer needed than they're needed.
Appreciate your statement. Maybe we may need you to be the Sergeant General up there, huh?
If, if the question is the difference between freedom and safety, then we might as well amend it to get rid of car seats, seat belts, and the laws against drinking and smoking when you're underage.
Happy to hear you say that. Thank you very much.
So.
And maybe the only other thing you can do is help us too, right? Exactly. Help us put back some of the, according to many studies, the way we can make our streets and crosswalks safer by far with the art that's been out there that promotes, doesn't demote, safety. So whatever you can do to help us there, too.
Happy to do it. One of the things that I get frequently tagged with is, we have some off-ramps, and they're generally in Orange County, Lake Underhill Road by Ala Fea, that are very dangerous. We have a lot of senior citizens, we have a lot of visitors, neither of whom are familiar or have some vulnerabilities around visual acuity. And we've got a retention pond out there, which is like the number-one place in Florida where people drive into the water.
Right.
And so there's, we, we have to balance that, is that, you know, I'm sure Jacksonville wasn't thrilled that they had to paint over all the Jaguar heads walking to the stadium, but that was, that was part of it, too.
Or the checkers at Daytona Speedway.
Checkered flag, yeah, all the above, right. They all got, all in the same thing.
There are studies that really, really, really support the fact that those increase safety. So whatever you can do to help us there, Senator, would be fabulous.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sir. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, we got a proclamation.
Don't forget the daughters.
And we have a proclamation for Constitution Week. If the daughters of the American Revolution are here and can come forward.
Do they manage to get into the room? Yes, as you would be.
Come on up here with.
I don't have my dabble.
Uh-oh.
Whereas, September 17th, 2025, marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations... Excuse me, can we have the people, and I apologize that we are so crowded, but we need the people in the hallway to be quiet while we're conducting business, please. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Woodruff, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Sanford, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us and this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
I would just like to welcome all the citizens to join us on September 17th at 4:00 p.m. in downtown Sanford at the clock tower, where we ring bells aloud to celebrate the Constitution Day. So please join us. Thank you very much, Mayor Woodruff.
Thank you.
What time was that bell ringing?
4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m.
Okay, it is going to take cooperation on all of our parts with this crowd and with this many people wanting to participate, to facilitate public input. If you did not get one of the yellow forms, we will be calling for additional people that want to speak, so you do not have to have the yellow form filled out. Before the consent agenda, I will check to see if anyone wants to speak. During the public hearing, we will afford that opportunity to anyone who wishes to speak. And when we get to regular items, which I think is what most of you are here for, we will go through the yellow forms, and then I will call on anyone else that wants to be recognized. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker on each item. And during citizens' participation, and I'm going to ask the commission's approval to move citizens' participation to after the fire fee. Okay, now, the citizens' participation is for things not on the agenda. And so I would like to move the part where we're talking about things not on the agenda after the fire fee, so that all the people that want to speak on the fire fee can go first. Okay.
Approved.
All right. And so during citizens' participation...
Hold on, Mayor, can you, can you repeat the fact that those that want to speak about the fire fee will have an opportunity?
Okay.
You're, you're talking about a different speaking part.
So we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on any item they wish to that is not on the agenda. The fire fee is on the agenda, and so I want to get to that first before we open it up to other comments. Okay, because I believe that's what most of you are here for. So everyone will have an opportunity to speak if they want to. All right. So, no, that'll be after we deal with the fire fee. Right. No. Okay, so that brings us to the minutes for the August 11th, 2025 Work Session Regular Meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we really need you to be quiet so that people can hear. Am I as loud as I can go?
If it's any closer, then it's not.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
You do only have one sediment.
Which minutes do we have, August 11th? 2025 Work Session Regular Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously. That brings us to the first public hearing for adoption of the 2025-2026 Millage and 2025-2026 Budget. Ms. Lindsay. Are you presenting before the public hearing?
Just sit through the, on the, on the present item, declare the public.
Okay, so I'll declare the public hearing on the millage and budget open. This is the first public hearing on the City of Sanford's 2026 Millage and 2026 Budget. The tentative millage rate of 7.325 is a 6.8049% increase over the rollback rate of 6.8583 mil.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Cynthia Lindsay. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Sanford. And this presentation is for the 2026 Proposed Budget. As the mayor said, the tentative millage rate of 7.325 is a 6.8049 increase over the rollback rate of 6.8583. This was, will result in the average single-family homeowner paying $57.26 more in ad valorem taxes to the city per year. The general fund revenue is where the taxes go for the city, and this budget is increasing 9.53%. You can see 8.3, 8.11% of that is ad valorem taxes, with other revenue sources increasing it to the 9.53. General fund expenditures, of course, we have to have a balanced budget, are also increasing 9.53%. And over the different divisions, you can see the increases in total. 0.85% in admin and government, 0.27% in finance, 0.27% in development services, 3.61% in fire, 0.05% in human resources, 1.16% in recreation, 5.43% in police, 0.47% in public work, with transfers out and other uses decreasing. This is the budget outlook changes. This is how we balance the budget of our increase in revenue of 7.4 million. We had an increase in personnel costs of 7.6 million, an increase in operating costs of 1.8, and a decrease in non-departmental costs of $2 million. Ad valorem taxes compared to public safety. As you can see, the first bar graph on each of the individual years is the ad valorem taxes. Public safety costs are the second bar graph. So, pub, I meant, ad valorem taxes are the second, that's why. And so the public safety is outpacing our ad valorem taxes. Current and future needs for 2026 budget year, we still need approximately $5.5 million of unfunded capital requests from the departments, about $1 million in unfunded additional requests from departments for operations. CIP overall, we're unfunded about 4.1 that we need to make sure that our maintenance and repairs and replacements are done properly. And then for the upcoming budget years, we're looking at a need for the Fire Station 40 of about $4.6 million in operation equipment and additional personnel. There's a possible legislation out there requiring firefighters to work less hours, which would cost the city about $4 million a year. And we have the Gold Spurled Sports Complex, complex operational costs when that is up and running. Ad valorem taxes. In the City of Stanford, we do have the highest millage rate in the county. However, the single-family homeowner is paying less than most of the other cities in the county, except for Castleberry and Longwood. Longwood is almost even with us, and Castleberry is about $93 less than us. And that's due to our property values. Also, if you look at the cost per resident for ad valorem taxes, we are the lowest in the county. Ours is $377 per resident compared to the other cities in the county. Everyone else is higher than us per resident. And that's the presentation for the budget. Open it up for comments or questions.
Anybody have questions or comments?
Can you just explain what CIP stands for for those in the room who don't know what CIP is?
It's Capital Improvement Program. So it's the replacement and maintenance of all our capital and infrastructure, buildings, vehicles, recreational parks, that sort of item.
And can you also explain that we have to have a balanced budget? We are not allowed to not have?
Correct. We're not federal. The state is required to have a balanced budget.
Cindy, on that same item, I think the last version of this, we had that under the 2027 budget year or later, but it's now under the 2026, so it's correctly placed there now, right?
Which item?
The CIP and actually the $1 million in unfunded tuition request.
For 2026, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No questions, but comments. Just so that the, our residents and business owners that are here, even though this is the first public hearing that we're having, the city staff has met with our city commission. We have gone through our budget thoroughly. We've met over time. So for those who are not aware, this is not our first time looking at this presentation. I just want to help people understand what's actually happening here.
Yes, the city budget starts in February of each year, and it cumulates to the final approval of the budget at the end of September.
All right, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that switches to speak on the budget or the millage rate for this item? You want to speak on the budget? Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for opportunity to talk here. My name is Bajan, and I live in 3461 Windsor Lake Circle, Sanford, Florida. For the CIP item, you guys could apply for local funds through FDOT and MetroPlan, and most of your maintenance and safety is going to be covered by federal fund that your city cannot pay for it. And I don't think that's a possibility. You guys thought about it? It takes away from your budget. You guys applying for LAP?
Applying for what?
LAP projects is the local-funded agreement through MetroPlan and FDOT. I know this because I work for a different city, and I am gathering fund for the city, and I know how that works. All your CIP budget can go when you apply for local funding, and it will be federally funded, so that way it's going to go away from your budget.
Okay.
And if you need more help, I can go more in detail through, look at the budget. And they are proving it every year, and you get a lot of, a lot of... I seen project with $12 million. I seen project with 15. I seen with 18, all federally, federally funded, and you don't have to carry that burden.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I serve on MetroPlan, and we do receive funds from MetroPlan, and we do receive grant funds. MetroPlan and grant funds will not fund all of our capital improvement projects.
What kind of project it is, there's always a way. I want to make sure that you guys have a representative going to MetroPlan meeting, and do you have intake application? I'll be willing to help, but I'm telling you, all the CIP can go there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Gerald Martin, I'm at 2855 Magnolia. I just wanted to question, did you say that it was $4 million for the firefighters because of the regulations? They have to work less hours, so there's $4 million for that budget?
No, it's not budgeted. Those are items that were not budgeted for.
That's because you're having to hire part-time people, or?
If the state may, changes the regulation and requires firefighters to work fewer hours in order for us to maintain our staffing, it will cost about $4 million more than what we are paying now for firefighters.
You'd have to hire more.
We would have to hire more firefighters.
And they'll be full-time, it won't be?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak on the budget?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm sir. I am the owner of the property address 215 South Oak Avenue, I'm also an attorney. So I received a letter that the commis, the city sent to everybody, including on my neighbors and every, my friends. So the first thing I would like to say is, the letter lack of evidence to prove why you need this kind of.
Okay, ma'am, are you talking about the fire fee?
On the taxes that you want to.
Okay, that's, that's an item that we'll talk about in a little bit. Right now, we're only talking about the overall city budget. We will talk about the fire fee specifically in a little bit.
I understood what you said, sir, but I want to express my opinion, especially based on the law. The government, based on the American Constitution, Amendment 14, many sections stated that no state, including the local authority, can impose heavy taxes. Taxes mean anything you want to collect from the citizen, unless you can prove to the citizen that you need those money. I didn't see any numbers, any evidence attached to the letters, prove that the City of Sanford need this kind of budget. So that's the first thing, the violation, the proposal violate the Constitution of America. Also, under the case of Norton v. South U.K., Wilderness Aliens, the Supreme Court said that any government, state, and local should clarify and very clear to its citizens for whatever they want to do. I heard your budget, you need 10 million, 4 million, a lot of things like that, but we don't know what the money for. And the history of the expenses in the last 10 years, you need more money for the fire department, fire protection and rescue. I understand it's very important. However, the city failed to prove that the current taxes have cover on the expenses already. That's what I want to express.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the overall budget or the millage rate? We will speak about the fire fee specifically in a little while. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on the budget and bring in the commission for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Okay, I am confident that our staff, our, ourselves. Oh, I'm not following the right thing, Sam.
You want to do two separate motions, so you want to do a motion as to the budget, and then you're going to do a motion as to millage. Either way, just make sure it's two separate motions.
Okay, so I need a motion on the millage rate first, please.
Move to approve the millage rate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passionously. Now, a motion on the budget?
Move to approve the budget.
Second.
Okay, and we do look at all sources of income. If there is another opportunity for us to find some money, I would be more than happy to, to explore that with you. All of our.
It's public record.
All of our budgets are on the city, excuse me, all of the budgets are available on the city website. As long, and the proposed budget has been on the city website since July. All right. Okay, so.
This is the first reading.
The final hearing on the city's 2025-2026 millage and budget will take place on Monday, September 22, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. here in the City Commission chambers at City Hall. As I mentioned, the budget document is available on the city's website under the Finance Department.
And it is a little long, and it's a little painful trying to get through it all, but we did it. So if you really care, it's out there, feel free to read. You got it.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any of the items that are on the consent agenda? The fire fee is not on the consent agenda. Okay? Seeing no one, I'll bring that to the commission for action.
Move to approve.
Motion and second, all in favor? Oh, eight?
I would like to pull M.
Okay, so can we rescind the motion, please?
I move to rescind the motion.
Sorry. Okay, so, can we get a motion on A through L? Wait, we were supposed to pull something.
We pulled B.
Okay, we're pulling B, so consent A, C through L, and N.
I move to approve consent A, C through L, not M, because she's pulling M, and N.
N as in Nancy. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passionously. Item M.
Item M, and this is probably for our acting city manager, Mr. Radzak.
Yes.
This is about the Mayfair Golf Course. There's a section in here about hours of operation.
Right.
And it says the bar may remain open for evening events but must vacate the property by midnight. It, has it been the previous clubhouse, was that open until midnight? Was there any issue with that?
No, I don't think so.
Commissioner Austin says no.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, just checking on that. Also, there are some other things I think Craig, you and I can discuss that just have to do with the contract that's already been approved.
Okay.
But it's more of a, I'm, I'm not going to keep all the audience here for all of this, so. That was the main one I was concerned about. Okay, thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion on M?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passionously. That brings us to public hearings, Resolution 3416. Please introduce me.
I could, I could do it, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. At August 11, 2025 city commission meeting, the commission approved ordinance number 4831, which authorized the city commission to impose and collect fire assessment fees. Resolution number 3416, which is being considered tonight, relates to the authorization and collection of fire assessments, assessment fees. This is the final proposed action to be considered by the commission as defined by the ordinance to approve the fire assessment fees in the amount of approximately $2.1 million in the next fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2025. It is staff's recommendation to approve Resolution number 3416.
Okay. Are we going to have a presentation? Okay, we're going to do the presentation.
Yes, you ready? Good evening, I'm Mike Burton, I'm a senior principal of the Rattellis, and we were retained by the city to develop this fire assessment. I know you got a lot of people here, so I'll try to go through this relatively quickly. So myself and Eric Van Molson were the two who did this. We both have a lot of experience with these, all over the state of Florida, doing these types of assessments. I'm going to talk about the background, the methodology, the calculation of the fire assessment, and the adoption requirement. The City of Sanford retained Rattellis to design a fire protection, non-advalorem assessment program, but fund a portion or all of the city's fire department. The city currently funds this fire department through the city's general fund. Fire assessment is a charge imposed against real property to pay for fire services provided by the local government. Is a fire assessment a tax? No, it's not. There are similarities, both generate revenue to pay for services and facilities. Both are mandatory and can be collected on the tax bill. The differences are, assessments must provide a special benefit to the property, and taxes need not do that. Florida case law has established two requirements for the imposition of a non-advalorem special assessment. They are that the property assessments derive a special benefit from the service provided, and the assessment must be fairly and reasonably apportioned among the properties that receive the special benefit. Costs that have been determined by case law to be included in a fire assessment are traditional fire protection services, first response medical aid, including stabilization and first aid, and basic life support services, which are considered one of the routine duties of firefighters. EMS services or emergency medical services above first responder services cannot be included in a fire assessment, and they include costs for medical transport, advanced life support services, and other medical treatment. Those costs are not in what you're seeing tonight. Required exemptions also includes federal, state, and local government-owned properties, common elements of condominiums, submerged and undeveloped properties that receive no benefit. Now, the first two, they're exempt, but their cost that they otherwise were to pay is not spread over to the other properties. Those costs have to be borne by the city. An assessment is a cost-effective and financially stable means of funding fire services and facilities. Revenues do not fluctuate with changes in property values or other economic variables. So if your property values go up, the assessment will not go up. Revenue diversification is provided here, which is always a good thing, and it's a dedicated funding source for the fire department. The revenue raised by the fire assessment must be used for the fire department and only for the fire department. It can be designed to fund all or a special, a specific portion of the fire department's cost, and the city commission determines the level of rates and the cost recovery percentage each year. The methodology that was employed here for this study is the availability method, which is a simple two-tiered rate structure for all residential and non-residential parcels. Tier one is a flat rate, a flat fee that's equal per parcel. Tier two is a variable fee per parcel, which is based upon the value of the structures on the parcel, not the, not the overall value of the parcel, just the value of the structure. It's administratively easier to mandate than the other commonly-used methodology, which is call-for-service methodology. It utilizes publicly available data from the county property appraiser. Assessments do not shift based upon changes in call demand, and it does not distinguish between property classifications. The tier one benefit is called a response readiness availability benefit. All properties with a vacant or developed are charged the tier one rate. It's a single equal fee per parcel. All parcels in the city benefit equally from the availability of fire protection service that the city provides on-call without discrimination as the property class on a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week, year-round basis. The benefits include the availability of immediate response to fire, first responder medical aid to protect the life and safety of occupants, containment of liability for emergency incidents on the subject parcels, and the spread of fires to other property, and enhanced property value, enhanced marketability of and/or ability to develop the property. Therefore, it is appropriate to portion the cost in this cost pool equally per parcel. And this call, cost pool is about 30% of the total cost in the assessment. Tier two benefit is the protection from the loss of a structure. Only improved properties are charged the tier two rate. Improved properties are all non-vacant properties with developed structures on the property. There's a charge for every $5,000 of structure value, and it's rounded down to the nearest $5,000, not the assessed value, just the structure value, as determined by the property appraiser that's available in the property appraiser system. The $5,000 structure value equals an equivalent benefit unit that we'll talk about during this, or an EBU. Improved properties receive the following benefits in addition to the tier one benefits for their tier two payment. Protection from the loss of the value of structures on the property due to fire, by virtue of the ability to obtain fire insurance and to obtain that insurance at attractive rate because of the availability of fire protection service that the city provides. And protection from loss provided by the availability of fire suppression service provided by the city if they're able to get to the fire soon enough to contain the loss. How it's calculated? After the presentation of the revenue requirements of the fire department, it can be included in the assessment to the city commission. The commission determines only recover the annual, average annual cost of capital expenditures in the assessment. This equates to probably 9.5% of the annual revenue requirements to the fire department. So the remainder, almost 91%, have to be funded through the general fund. The net revenue requirement is 22.3 million of the fire, of the fire department. The average annual capital costs are 2.3 million, 2.13 million. So that's the amount that's going to be recovered in the fire assessment. The capital needs, if you look at the capital needs from 26 through 30, you can see they go up and down year by year. But the second line shows that the average annual capital needs are $2.13 million. That's how much will be recovered in the assessment and available to the city as a, as a net income coming from the assessment. When you look at the, the, over to the right, you'll see the rate per parcel is going, in tier one, is going to be 35.28 per parcel, and for tier two, it's going to be $1.33 for every thousand, every $5,000 of structure value that's on the parcel. When you look at, at, in the middle column there, it shows that in order to have 2.131 dollars of revenue at the bottom of that, we have to include 2.5 million in the assessment because of the exemptions and the costs associated with the exception, the assessment, to give that net income of 2.13 million, 131 million dollars, 2.130 million dollars. When you look at this, the gray shaded areas, the single-family home, the average structure value of those, in those homes in the city is about $200,000, and their annual assessment will be $88.48. If you look at it on an equivalent monthly basis, it's about $7.37. And we just looked at a low value of $75,000 and a high value of $400,000. And you can see over there, it would be 55.23 for the low of structure value, and 141.68 for the higher structure value. And you can see here, we did a sample of other types of properties, a small apartment complex, a larger complex, a retail store, a restaurant, a department store, and if you see over to the right, those are the annual amounts that each of those types would, would receive for their average structure value. And at the bottom, you can see a vacant lot, it's not, it's not, has no structure value on it, would be charged 35.28 per year. The initial adoption requires public hearings to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. Assistant city manager mentioned that there was a first reading of a procedure ordinance on July 28. I does not oppose the assessment, it only establishes procedure for the initial levy and the annual administration of the assessment. The second reading was held on August 11. The initial levy requires adoption of an initial assessment resolution, which was adopted on January 28, on July 28. Specify, that, that resolution specified the intended rates and revenues to be adopted, as well as the maximum rate. The maximum rates are adopted so the city may adjust rates in future years up to the maximum amount without additional citywide first-class mail notices. They still have to go through the notice process and have a hearing for it, they just don't have to mail out the first-class mail notices. The scheduled public hearing for September 8, which we're in now, and the direct mail and the published notice of public hearing have been taken care of. And the notice requirements included a local advertisement and a local newspaper 20 days prior to the public hearing, which was done. And first plus, first-class mail notices to all potentially assessed property owners, stating the assessment rates and the proposed assessments for the property. The first-class mail notices must be postmarked 20 days prior to the hearing, which they were. Final adoption of levy of initial assessment. Following this final hearing, being held today on the. Following this final hearing, being held today on the September 8, the city commission will consider adoption of a final assessment resolution to approve and adopt the fire assessment rates for fiscal year '26 and approve the assessment role. If the city adopts the final assessment resolution following this public hearing, the fire assessment for FY '26 will be approved and levied. The city will direct bill the fire assessment for FY 2026. It will be a mailing to each property owner that's subject to the assessment for the bill, and the city commission will consider a resolution expressing their intent to use the property tax bill collection method before the end of December 2025. If that intent resolution is adopted, the collection of the fire assessment on property tax bills for FY '27 will commence with a November 26 property tax bill. For each year following the initial levy, the commission will adopt resolutions to approve the rates of the fire assessment and the assessment role for the forthcoming fiscal year. Annual resolution must be adopted by no later than September 15 each year. And I went through that quickly, but that's the end of the presentation, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have the maximum rates handy?
I do. It's in another file. I'll get it for you real quick.
Excuse me, sir. Hold on, please.
Sorry, it's further down. Okay, here it is. Let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger. The tier one rate, the maximum rate would be 340.
No, I mean the maximum rate at the 2.1 million.
I'm sorry, what?
The maximum rate of the 2.1 million, not the maximum rate that we could have charged if we did the entire.
Okay, I don't understand the question.
Did somebody have their letter?
Maximum rate for year 2025, tier one, tier two.
There's only one rate for that.
No, the maximum rate was listed in the letter.
I'm not clear about the question. I'm very sorry.
Okay, chief. Chief, can you get a letter from one of our citizens so I can?
Is that?
That's tier two.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I got it.
The maximum on the tier one is 39.70, and on the tier two is $1.50.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Okay. Is that the presentation?
That's it.
Okay. Ms. Lindsay, did you have anything to add in terms of presentation before we get started? Okay, before we go to speakers, I want to make a couple of comments because we have clearly gotten a lot of feedback from our residents on this. There, I would like to clear up a couple of things. One, we're not in a budget crisis. There's no mismanagement that is causing us to suddenly have to go ask for more money. This was what we thought of as a forward-thinking way of looking at how we fund the fire department. The difference between using property taxes and using the assessment, one of the main differences is we have a lot of tax-exempt property in the city of Sanford. Think about, we have some homes that are below a value that pay any property tax. We have a lot of nonprofit organizations that pay no property tax. The assessment is applied to all properties except for government-owned properties, as was stated, and condo common areas. But one of the reasons I find the assessment attractive is, over time, it means everyone is helping fund the fire department, not just our property taxpayers. So that's why we started looking at this last September, October. So we've looked at it for a long time. We decided to hold it to just the capital cost because we want to make sure when there's a call, we have equipment that works. And with the size of our department, as you see, we're spending over $2 million a year on capital. And this provides us a way to know we have the funding to purchase the items, replacement engines, replacement air packs, all the things that the fire department uses. Okay, thank you. All right.
Your honor.
All right, appreciate that. Okay. A number of people have asked me about why don't we just use impact fees? Impact fees can only be used for new cost. So we're building a new fire station because we have a lot of new development out on Lake Mary Boulevard. Impact fees can be used to help build that fire station. Impact fees can be used to buy the initial fire engine and rescue squad for that fire station. Impact fees cannot be used for replacement equipment over time. So those of us that live here have to pay for the new equipment that we need to replace the equipment we have. We have a fire engine that we are not replacing this year that is 15 years old. And the last thing, well, probably not the last thing, but the last thing I've written down, the reason I asked to make sure we knew the maximum rate was because that 10% increase thing has bothered a lot of people, okay? The maximum rate we can go to is the $39.7, $39.70 for the tier one, okay? Above the 30, the first year would be 35.28, $35.28. The maximum we can go to is $39.70. For tier two, the rate, if we do this, the first year's rate would be $1.33. The maximum rate we can go to is $1.50. So we would be, and I can't imagine we would do this, but we would be allowed to go up 10% in one year. But, wait, excuse me? Excuse me? We would be able to go up 10% in one year, but we would not be able to go above the maximum rate, which is about 12.5% total. So I just want, it's not, we're not setting, if we pass this, we are not setting something that we can increase 10% every year. We can increase it a total of 12.5% without going back to another study and another notice to everyone by first-class mail. Now, to be perfectly honest, I'm on the fence on this. I think, I think the fire assessment is a good way to fund the fire department. I think our residents either don't understand or just disagree with me. A lot of them, and we will hear from them in a minute, but we have heard from them a lot, a lot of them already. But I don't know if anyone else in the commission wants to share any thoughts before we go to comments.
Yeah, I would. I'm Commissioner Britton, and I would like to say that I absolutely love the civic engagement. I wish that you all were here on a couple of other items that we brought before the commission. Your comments, everything is important for us. It helps to guide us, and we're here to listen to you. Each and every one of you are our bosses, right? You are the boss, and we work for you. But we also want you to know that we have gone through this through many meetings, and I'm going to ask a couple of questions throughout this time that I already know the answer to, but you may not know the answer to, because we have looked at this thoroughly. But I want to remind you that you're the boss, and we are here for you, and I encourage what you all are here to do today, okay?
Anyone else?
I would absolutely agree with what Commissioner Britton is saying, and we also understand the fact that a lot of you didn't know anything about this until you got the letter. So you need to have the time to read through that, to be here, to hear what we have to say, to hear what your fellow citizens have to say. We appreciate the fact that you haven't had the time we've had to absorb this and understand it. And that's why this is, it is great to see the participation here. So we hope you get all the information you need to, as Commissioner Britton said, help us make the right decision for all of you.
Anyone else? All right, then I will go to the yellow forums first, and you will have three minutes to speak. Morgan Monroe.
Thank you so much. My name is Morgan Monroe, and I live at 1408 Belair Boulevard, Sanford 32771. I know we're running short on time, so I'm going to go through this really quickly. First, want to say that Sanford is a really great place to live. In our eight years here, we've seen it grow tremendously in the right directions. Definitely fully support funding fire protection and first responders. It's essential service, and I'm willing to pay more for it. My objection is not to the fire department, but to the funding structure being proposed here, specifically the fee-for-service model. Sanford's grown rapidly, but the city has often given tax breaks and special deals to developers instead of capturing long-term revenue from them. Examples include the new sports district, projected to cost over $100 million, is structured around incentives and hotel taxes that mostly benefit developers and operators. That's money that could have supported public safety instead. Another example, the senior community in downtown here. Instead of maximizing the taxable value with high-end housing, the city incentivizes a project that will likely produce less long-term property tax growth. The city, I know, is fiscally responsible. We've seen it before. Parks are well-kept and maintained. Roads are well-maintained, resurfaced all the time. We've had a budget surplus several times. But the funding gap that we're facing here is not an accident. It's the result of piecemeal decisions that have been made over the years and missed chances to build a stronger revenue base. A better long-term solution, in my opinion, is increased impact fees on developers who directly derive the demand for new fire services, rebalancing business and tourism taxes so the cost of growth isn't unfairly shifted just onto homeowners. And third, and most importantly, plan holistically. The bottom line is that we're forced into new fees every time the department comes up short. I mean, if you think about the whole budget when you're making any decision about any part of the budget, I think that would help because piecemeal thinking is kind of what got us into this shortfall. So in closing, I'd just like to say that, you know, please fund the fire department, but not through an annual fee that automatically grows. Let's look at the bigger picture. Smarter development deals and stronger growth policies would have prevented this crisis in the first place. I would suggest implementing this fee one time for this year only, then either finding a better revenue stream for it or put it to a vote next year so that the residents can decide if they want to pay or if you can cover it by making more profitable deals with developers. We know that it's only a fee because the taxpayers wouldn't have approved it in the first place. So I've got 10 seconds left. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Morgan.
All right, just to clarify a couple of things, the sports complex and the tourist taxes is done by Seminole County. The city has nothing to do with that. And I already mentioned how impact fees cannot be used for ongoing replacement of equipment that the city overall needs. And I'd also clarify again, there is no budget shortfall that we have an emergency to replace with this fee. This is something we have been looking at for a number of months as a different way to fund the fire department over time. So Ed Clark. Are you Ed Clark? Okay, when you come up, ask that question, please. Okay? Is Ed Clark here?
That's not. Also, could we, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but Mr. Morgan had some really great points that I'm jotting down, and I couldn't hear because we were clapping. I really appreciated the enthusiasm, but we're also trying to gather information as well. Thank you, Morgan.
Okay, Jean Cruckmeyer. Here he is.
Jean Cruckmeyer, come on down.
Is this going to be a short film or a long film, Jean?
Jean, we love your shorts.
Forty-five seconds.
Forty-five, all right.
Jean Cruckmeyer, 608 South Elm Avenue. I feel sorry for the commissioners. Sorry because you've been put in this position to have to decide something that should have been taken care of years ago by the city manager, who should have anticipated this before now. This is something that supposedly needs to be covered by a new yearly tax. After all, he's been preparing the city budgets since he was hired in 2011, 14 years ago. A few days ago, the mayor, thankfully, said in a notice to property owners, quote, "There's no budget crisis requiring this assessment," unquote. In that same notice, he said the overall general fund budget, including all revenues, including property taxes, will increase about 8.8% for this coming year. Since that's the case, it seems that a city manager, maybe a new city manager, could use some of that new revenue to save and put toward the fire expenditures as needed rather than having the commission pick up the pieces and pass on its additional tax to cover budgeting shortfalls.
I would point out, it was a commissioner who suggested we look at the fire fee, not the city manager.
He's been creating budgets for 14 years. He should have anticipated something like this, to be making plans for it.
Okay, thank you. John Spolsky.
John Spolsky, 301 West First Street, Sanford, sorry. I've lived in this area for 66 years, so I'm pretty familiar with it. Funds affecting first responders are something that I take very seriously. My dad was, excuse me, with the Seminole County Sheriff's Department for over 25 years. My son was in law enforcement for over 12, and now he's transitioned into being an instructor for law enforcement. So it's still in a first responder kind of situation. Therefore, I don't take this lightly when it comes to the firefighters. But I'd like to look at the big picture, if you will, for everybody probably in this room, and I'll give you a couple of quick examples. I got my notification from Seminole County on one of our buildings, and the taxes on that one building went up 60% this coming year based on their proposed budget, and there was no improvements done to the building which would have affected the valuation of that building. Insurance that everybody here is dealing with, the insurance industry is in a shambles. One of our buildings, a year-plus ago, our rates on that one building with no ever claims being made on it increased over 100% in the cost of insurance. The everyday thing these people are dealing with, going to the grocery store, everything that has to do with inflation that everybody in here is dealing with. The cost of living is just out of control. I could go on and on with many other reasons, and you could sit there and say, "Well, we don't have any control over what you're just saying to us. We're just the city commission." But I want to give you 3.75 million reasons that you could have made a difference, and that had to do with the fiasco known as the Heritage Center that you all, except Commissioner Thomas wasn't there, you all unanimously agreed to give 3.75 million dollars to a developer who lied. And Commissioner Austin, you even validated that, that they never had their financing in place, never. But at the end of your meeting, you were saying what great stand-up people they were. You know, that's unconscionable to give away 3.75 million dollars, and that's just scratching the surface. By the time you figure everybody's fees, as far as in this whole building, as far as the attorney's fees, all the staff fees, everything else, 3.75 is a joke. Ray LaSard was charged with coming up with something to, so that Sanford wouldn't have a black eye from this. He tried valiantly, but in my opinion, Sanford wound up with two black eyes from this because what he exposed from them was they claimed that they had 3.6 million dollars invested in this. what he exposed from them was they claimed that they had $3.6 million invested in this. It doesn't matter. They were liars. It doesn't matter if it was 10 times that amount. You were under no obligation to make them whole on this deal. Eight to 10 years that elapsed. Sorry, I only have 30 seconds. As far as your responsibility, when you were saying, Mayor, in all due respect, that there is no mismanagement here that caused this need for the fire department, for needing these assessments, which is a tax. Call it what it is, it's a tax, all right? Quit dancing around it. It is a tax on everybody in here. But to sit there and try to qualify it as, well, there's no mismanagement.
Finish up, please.
Okay. You know, that was gross mismanagement, you know, on my part. In the 66 years I've lived here, this, to me, is one of the biggest embarrassments that Sanford has ever been known for, and you are not going to just let it be swept under the rug. It is out there. Everybody in here knows it, and now everybody in here is coming to voice their objection to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Connor McGuire.
Hey, thank you for taking the time. I've been reading off my phone, so bear with me. My name's Connor McGuire. I live at 403 Sanlanta Circle. I'm a Sanford homeowner. I work in the construction industry as a project manager. Recently, my father's been battling cancer. I've had to help operate his business. This has limited my income, made my finances tighter than ever. From 2024 to this January, my property taxes will have gone up $700. When I became aware, I reduced expenses as much as I could. The next thing I know, I get a letter from Sanford saying I owe more. Cost of living and homeowner's insurance is skyrocketing. People are being squeezed more now than ever. The city of Sanford government is doing great financially and has seen massive growth in its net position, reserves, and overall income across the board. In 2022, total revenue outpaced expenses by 22.6 million. In 2023, revenue outpaced expenses by 25.5 million. In 2024, total revenue outpaced expenses by 36.6 million. The mayor reasons that fire trucks have gone up from $600K to nearly $1 million. While the increase in profits from 2022 to 2024 is $14 million, I think you can manage a couple new trucks without this measure. The growth in net position since 2020 has outpaced the population growth by a factor of more than eight to one. It seems obvious to me that no matter what the numbers are, this assessment is just another low-hanging fruit because you see other municipalities doing it. Right after nearly $4 million settlement for the heritage project, we're going to be forced to fund $2.3 million of fire equipment. $7 million is going to a golf club. $20 million is going to the marina, which FEMA is expected to reimburse. When the $20 million for the marina is refunded, will this tax be removed? Of course not. The new tax will stay in place forever while Sanford pockets the cash. It's an insult to every resident's intelligence to say there's no other choice but to levy a new recurring tax in perpetuity. I've read all the mayor's comments to the media, and I've not read one word about a single cut or sacrifice that has been made to prevent this new tax. Make no mistake, if these fees aren't paid, the letter says they'll take your house away.
That's right.
For such serious consequences, shouldn't you be taking taxation more seriously? Where are the cuts? Calvin Coolidge, our 30th president, once said, "Collecting taxes more than absolutely necessary is legalized robbery." I do not feel like this body has done its due diligence to assure it's absolutely necessary. To the contrary, this can be funded through our existing funds. That's a fact. Before you make your votes, I ask that each of you take a moment to consider the thousands of Sanford residents that will struggle to make hard choices at the grocery store this year. That's a reality you all need to consider. Next election is November 2026. I'll see you there.
Thank you, Connor.
This one, Yamalath, and I can't read the last name.
Hi, my name is Yamalat Yuriasar. My English is not so good. I want to get a letter to you.
Okay, hand it to the chief, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I never am bowling. I never come. I don't have time. I have to work a lot because my taxes is $7,000 on $500.
Gracias for being here.
Next year, they told me my taxes will be $7,000 on $100. Plus that, I think my taxes will be $8,000. I'm soon for, I'm 59, I will be 60, and I don't know if I can, when I retire, I can pay my own home and the mortgage I had for 15-year more. I think this is, I don't know how we will do if you, it's a little, it's not so much. You just see the port center, but every year, my taxes will go up, and plus that, too. I don't know how we will do. And I'm talking, maybe too many people is here for the same reason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yamal.
Daniel Ruiz.
Hello, can you hear me? I just, a lot of people have already brought up a lot of concerns that I had. Oh, Daniel Ruiz, 1507 Cut Hill Way. I'm here on behalf of a lot of friends and business owners who couldn't make it tonight. So a lot of concerns in only three minutes. But one of them is, I see a slippery slope happening here, which is, you know, we have the fire doing this to come up with a potential shortfall. Are there any guarantees this commission can give us that the police department won't be behind it?
Yes, because state law does not allow you to do it for the police department.
Does not allow it. Well, you know, we could call it something else perhaps, but that's good. I also think, you know, the commission could do well by perhaps maybe alleviating some citizens' concerns about the penalties for not paying this. It does, it's using the same methods as property tax, you know, putting tax liens and potentially taking people's homes from under them. I believe that was separated from this. You could find a lot more support for something like this. Like I said, I just see it as a slippery slope. I think this has not been explained properly, and that's not really a hit on you guys. You know, I know you have to play the villain tonight, but you have a very good commission up here. I come from South Florida. I have seen bad ones. But I really think you could have done yourselves a service by putting out more letters about this, having more public hearings of this, to explain this. Because here in Seminole County, we did reapprove the penny sales tax, and they really went out and campaigned for it. There were ads, there were things in your mailbox, and I really think if you went out and explained this better to citizens about, you know, the budgetary constraints, that you have gone through it with a fine-tooth comb and you can't find these things, and just do a little more for that and take it easy on these people. They're a little upset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Hector Figueroa.
Hector Figueroa, 160 Pinefield Drive. First, I want to have a question. Why in the presentation, we're missing a few pages? Like, explain the full cost of recovery or the partial cost of recovery? It was removed from that presentation on the screen. Transparency is powerful for a service. Second of all, if we work in an approval, the partial recovery or the full recovery? Because they have different formula for both.
Right. What we are considering is partial recovery, and that's why those slides were taken out. The total amount that we are looking at possibly collecting would be the $2.1 million per year.
For the partial, okay. We support, you know, the previous speakers will be on it. We should be supporter of every first responders, like fire department, EMT, medical. But another portion, obviously, the partial is like a $2 million something every year or whatever. How much we pay for the assessment roughly did to put this on this presentation, like was keeping pages on the screen? How much was that contract?
What was the cost of the study?
It's good for transparency, you know?
And you shouldn't be able to...
Yeah, we can go quicker because my time, if we can pause the time, it could take forever.
Well, go ahead, and then we'll get you the answer.
Well, to be honest, the other portion is, do we in compliance with the law required for approval of this budget? Because first of all, the requirement for this approval, key requirement for imposition of no add valorment, benefit, the assessment must fund improvements or services that provide a direct special benefit to the assessment, real property differing in kind of degree from benefit to the general community. With that says, in the same fire department webpage, basically, what benefit they bringing to us right now, additional to the service that they already providing to the community? They already found it with the taxpayer money.
There is not an additional benefit. This will fund part of the current benefit, which is, there is a fire department to respond to your house if necessary.
But if that's the case, if no one complying with the requirement, the law, the case law, the last case law from Lake County versus Wade Water Oak Management, in that one, they approved the budget proposal because they add a benefit into it. That's a requirement for the approval of those assessment. They need to add something extra to what is already in place. That's what this case law, if anybody want to look for, Lake County versus Water Oak Management. They approved the assessment, but because they add extra services.
Okay, thank you. Did we get an answer on the cost of the study?
Yeah.
Mayor?
It's a number.
Sir, they're looking for it.
Got it.
Okay?
I have an answer for you. Out of the assessment, $23,000 is going for consulting fees, and any other costs that were incurred beyond that would be paid out of the general fund, not out of the assessment.
Okay, so $23,000 out of the assessment.
That's one of the deductions in here that was in one of the slides that we showed.
Are we telling all the citizens here, the only cost for that is going to be $23,000?
That's all that's being paid for.
Stop, hold on.
That's all that's being paid for.
That is not the entire cost of the study, though. There is more, a cost coming out. That's what we want, is the total cost of the study.
This is the portion that would be funded through the assessment.
Right, $23,000 of the assessment would go...
It's no full answer for the question.
I know. I'm waiting for the answer. I don't have it yet.
Because if we short for $2 million, we paying $2 million for assessment, we can relocate that money to where is it more important than the assessment?
$58,000.
$58,000.
Total.
Yes.
Thank you.
George Stevens.
That lady right there, she got it on my life, man.
I'm representing a few hundred folks at my congregation. I don't know if I get five minutes or three, but I am speaking on behalf of my congregation. I'm a pastor here in Sanford at Riverwalk Church, 801 West 22nd Street in Sanford. And Mr. Mayor, in all due respect, I know a lot of people that know you and told me about you, but I never met you till tonight. But I have a little problem. It sounded like that you're taking and mentioning nonprofit organizations will be assessed as well.
Yes, sir.
I don't think maybe you guys understand what nonprofit organizations do, how much we help people. You got the Crisis Pregnancy Center. You've got churches that feed people when they're hungry, help them with their own drugs, help them get out of situations. And it just sounds like this is just the way the world is going, that they're trying to do away with the faith-based ministries and tax them and do what... I understand how people feel about taxes and nonprofits, but we help a lot of people. Churches and nonprofit organizations help a lot of people. And maybe I didn't get the figures right, but you're talking about $5,000, $133 for every $5,000. Now, what is the price on 4.7 million if it's the value of your property? That's what we would have to pay. So I'm totally, 100%, not only for my congregation and the people who live there in this city that this is going to affect, but it's also going to affect the place they worship, a place where they get needs met, a place where they get help. And not only that, but the citizens of this country, I mean, the citizens of this city. And I see roads that need to be fixed in front of our church, and I've called and tried to get help, and there's alligator tracks, grass growing up through it, and my people coming out of the church see this. And I got a water bill for $2,000, and we can't even find a meter that it's on. It's not even on our property. And they assess, they say that they estimate it. Come on, folks. I need an amen back there. Estimating the water, and I get a $2,000 bill. We checked every faucet, we checked every toilet, and none of it is leaking, but yet we get a $2,000 bill. And we pay taxes on that as well. So I'm just saying, I'm totally in opposition to this. I believe in supporting the blue. I support the firefighters, the first responders, but a few weeks ago, I had a collapse, Mayor. I had to be taken to the hospital. I was in that ambulance going to the hospital. When I got to the hospital, I said, "You know, we got this thing coming up about the fire protection." And one of the guys said to me, "Yeah, you need to go to that meeting because we're not getting a dime of it."
The fire department would get every dime of that.
Who's going to make sure, Mayor? Who's going to make sure that the dime goes to them? And if it doesn't, is it misappropriation of funds?
Yes, it would be. Vanessa Martin.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the privilege of being able to speak before you today. Today, I'm coming also because I have the same problems that everybody else have here.
Ms. Martin, your address?
Oh, 2413 South Lake Avenue, Sanford, Florida. Okay? Thank you. I have the same problem that everyone else does. The city of Sanford is asking me for something. Matter of fact, they're not asking me. Y'all are demanding it from us. Y'all sent us a letter without an itemization of anything, and when we ask for something, it's hard to get. We got to go through, jump through all kinds of hoops. I got a leak on my property, which is the city's part of the property, and I take pictures and everything. Nobody, no one does anything. But I'm a taxpayer. I'm a homeowner. But you, everyone up here, y'all sent us a letter demanding, it's a demand, because really, we saw the vote before us. Y'all voted on something that we had no so say so over, and ratified it right in our face. So you let us know that today, that whatever we say doesn't count. But I'm just like the rest of everybody else up here. That's going to be a day where what we say is going to count. So I want you to take notes and remember every face that's in here, because we're going to make it count if y'all can't make it count for us today. Thank you so very much for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa.
John Horvath.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. John Horvath, 1004 Bradford Drive, Winter Park, Florida. And I always say, that's, I live in Seminole County, but I have a Winter Park mailing address, and I pay Seminole County taxes. I've been involved with the fire service for many years, and I follow this, and there's seven cities in the county. Three of them have merged with the county fire department, Eldamont, Castleberry, and Winter Springs, and each one of them has their own identity, et cetera. But in talking to the fire chief of Seminole County, the personnel were merged into the county fire department, and they fill in. In fact, when I attended a budget hearing for their presentation, the deputy chief was from Castleberry. So I'm looking at this city, and I know what fire trucks cost, a million dollars. I remember when they were half a million dollars, because Commissioner Delorey at a meeting corrected me on that. But I think you might want to look at maybe merging with the county. I know that scares a lot of people, but this day and age, with this unfunded mandate of this changing the hours costing you how many millions of dollars? What do you think it's going to cost the county and some of these other cities? And then I think Winter Garden was talking about assessment fees, and I think they dropped that because of this situation problem. that because of this pop situation problem, but this is a small county, and I know we work together, I've had discussions with you, Mayor, on this, and that one little step make, make a difference for these people and not have this other assessment, and I know Craig was a fire chief for many years here, so he knows what the fire service is, and he's worked with the county and all the other cities, and there's not a lot of difference because when you need the call, they're there with mutual aid, first response, and automatic dispatch from, from the county. So a lot of stuff has been merged, so to speak, and that would be a further step to stretch the tax dollars out for these citizens, because I'm tied with money, too. I've been retired for many years, and I just spent a thousand dollars on my computer, so you know, that's, that's a lot of money for me, but other things have gone up, but, uh, you need to look at that and think about that, because I know that people might not like what I'm saying, but that's a possibility, because if you know anybody in those cities that go to, you work with at church or whatever, ask them about their fire service, if they're disappointed with the county running it, and I don't think you'll hear an argument, because with automatic first response, a county truck can go anywhere in the county and vice versa, and I, I think Craig's aware of that, being a former fire chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Donaldson Woody, nineteen ninety-eight, East Fourth Street, Sanford, Florida, and by the way, what you have written on your paper is, we get five minutes for this section. Um, yes. So anyway, um, the, my biggest objections are what your letter that you sent to us does not reflect anything that that man over there said to, said to us. Four points. Arbitrary property valuation. Your letter to me attributes eighty-tiered-two EBUs to my property, implying a valuation of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Where you get that figure, I don't know, but if you can decide what my property value is, what's to say that next year, you're not going to say, oh, it's six hundred thousand dollars? He said that you can only assess a, a tier-two based on what the buildings on my property, according to the tax roll, says, not forty thousand dollars, or four hundred thousand dollars, what your letter says. See, that's what, I'm going by what the letter says. If what you sent to me isn't correct, please forgive me. I'm very passionate, I get excited, sorry. So that's a huge discrepancy right there. Uh, limitless future increases, you explained that a little bit better, but according to what your letter says, your letter says that you can raise it up to ten percent, or no, I'm sorry, you will not raise it more than ten percent unless we notify you, which says, you can do whatever you want. That's what your letter says, okay? If that's not true, okay, great, but I'm, I'm going by what the letter actually says. The words on the page, they, 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 uh, make a difference. Uh, third point.
He has three more.
I'm sorry?
You have three more, right? Go ahead.
Two more.
Okay.
Uh, the violation of the homestead property protections. As a homestead property, my tax increases are constitutionally limited by the Save Our Homes Amendment, SOH, which caps annual increases in, in assessed value to lesser than three percent or the CPI. A three percent increase on my particular property would equate to ninety-one dollars, whereas what you're proposing is going to be a hundred and forty-one dollars, which is a seven point seven percent increase. You can say this is not a tax, but if it's based on my property value, if it's collected by the taxing authority, and if it's, it's not a fee, because I pay fees for stuff that I choose. I want to watch Netflix, I pay the fee for it. If I don't want to watch Netflix, I don't pay the fee for it. A tax is something that is mandated, I must pay by your letter at the penalty of forfeiture of my property. That's what it says, and so, and I'm going to go by what you have written down, because any lawyer will tell you, it doesn't matter what you say, what's written on the page is what counts. So I'm going to take just one more minute, please. Breaking the ten percent rule, which you did address that, which I'm thankful for, that it, you're saying that it could never go up any more than that, but.
Without going through this full process again.
Yes, going through this process. So that, that's, that's almost a moot point. I'm not opposed to helping get the money necessary for the fire department, even though I personally live in a house that's fireproof, but that's okay. Um, it is, it, it has never, it's all steel. So anyway, the, uh, yeah, exactly.
Okay, finish up.
I, I'm finishing. As a longtime resident and homeowner in Sanford, I understand the need to maintain and improve vital public services, such as fire protection. However, these efforts must be undertaken with fairness, accountability, and respect for the financial constraints many citizens, especially seniors like myself who is retired, are facing. I appreciate your time and respectfully request that you reconsider the proposal assessment structure to ensure a more equitable and transparent solution. I just, I want to hear, if you don't mind, are you the determining factor as to, according to my letter, you said my house would be assessed at four hundred thousand dollars? He said the assessments would be based on the value on the tax roll of my buildings. Which one is it? If it's on the value of the building, I can belong with that. Thank you.
It's, it's based, it's supposed to be based on the property value, the building value as listed in the property appraiser's website. If a mistake was made in that, if this is passed, then that will be corrected.
Okay, because I'm, what I'm saying is, that is not what this letter said.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's why there's a lot of people here that are really upset.
Okay, thank you.
Based on what they got in the mail.
Thank you.
Randy Smathers.
Randy Smathers, one oh nine Maplewood Drive, Sanford, I know a lot of you guys, spend a lot of time with these guys, myself and the fire service, thirty-five years, started when I was fourteen, volunteering in the city of Lake Mary, but the reality is, um, for me, the reality is, going through here tonight and sitting, listening, I understand, and what heartburns me the most is, for a hundred and fifty years this fire department has been here, this commission has funded it one hundred percent, because it was a priority for them, for y'all, a priority, to keep us safe. That should not waver, that should be always the priority. To start looking for alternative funding fees immediately opens the door for what the last gentleman spoke about, which I was also part of, being with Seminole County for thirty-five years, was mergers. I worked a lot of these guys and gals that are out here and just fire trucks right now for many years, and the last thing that I ever talked about when we got on scene was a merger, because it started problems. I don't want to see it. I liked red fire trucks, I used to drive yellow and orange fire trucks, until they finally caved in and got us red fire trucks, but, so let's try to do everything we do. If you apply this fee, you are opening the door wide open for a merger, for Seminole County to come in, or you, as you're doing your due diligence, as you should, to look at this and say, can we do it cheaper? I could take a million dollars out of the fire fund budget right now by just administrative cost. I know this. You can take, you can spread the load of the equipment out across a bigger vast majority of people. Now guess what? It costs less, because the more people are helping pay for it around the whole county, all Seminole County citizens. That's not what you want. You want to keep your fire trucks, ensure they're red, and keep your people doing the right thing, that have a home-built community fire service. I looked at the budget. The problem we got really with the budget is, why is the fire department's budget increased twenty-six percent in the last five years, when all the other budgets rounded about sixteen percent? I mean, I spent the last week tearing this stuff apart, reading, 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 and now I think tonight, maybe you're talking about it, new station forty. Well, that's not all the existing Seminole, Sanford City, um, citizens' problem, that growth is going to create a cost for me. With you guys approving your line item tonight that you already voted on, my tax bill went up a hundred and two dollars, just like that. Now you're going to add another a hundred and forty-three dollars to it for my house of value. So that's two hundred and forty-three dollars for me. Thank God that I spent thirty-five years in the fire service and I can afford it, but there are people sitting in this room that cannot afford it, and if, my daughter was one, she's a single working mom, working for the county, you, you tell her she's got to pay two or three hundred dollars more, it's, it's a big deal for her. Well, it'd be a big deal for me, but, and the other thing I, I'll just ask you to take a look at real quick before I leave, is the transfer out fund. I called today, and I appreciate the city, I think the mayor's secretary called me back and talked to me about it, but why has that fund since two thousand nineteen increased three hundred percent? It's the only line item in the budget that has increased dramatically like that, and it stares out like a glare, a glow. If you take and pull up the budget and look at it, whatever that transfer out fee, I know if you Google it, it says that it's basically a, a fund that you guys can set up and put all your little projects in for around the city and your own little districts. That's probably what it is. Well, if that's not what it is, then I understand. I understand there's other stuff to it, but you have to look at that and explain it out when people like me look at it and read it, and like, that's way out of control. And last little quick point, thirty-five was here this morning, they had all the information wrong. They said that the city, most city, um, citizens were only going to see a thirty-five dollar increase. Well, you notice they got in a truck and drove off after I called them, told them it's going to be a hundred and thirty-five dollars per person, so, good luck, tough choices, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the, the, Ms. Lindsay, make sure I got this right. The transfers out is mostly to, um, debt payments for police cars and to capital, correct, which would include the fire department capital?
Yes, for debt service, it is for, um, capital use, it is no fund, it is also for public art, it is for, you know, like, that's it.
Okay, hold on. I was going to repeat what she had said.
It's also for Mayfair Marina, um, maintenance costs that the city has to bear, because it is our property, um, and there's one, oh, the, the CRA for the, um, Goldsboro area.
Okay, so, debt service, capital.
Public art.
Public art.
CDBG.
CDBG to cover, um, unfunded costs from the federal government on that, and.
Lahit.
Okay, Lahit, same thing.
Yes, cemetery.
Cemetery, Marina, and.
Mayfair.
Mayfair, okay.
You also said the CRA, Goldsboro. In the Goldsboro.
Yeah, um, and since it's come up a couple of times, we have looked at the, um, compared the cost of merging with the county a couple of times, um, it's been a while since we've done that. It's always come back that it would cost residents of Sanford more if we merged, um, it, it's always come back that it would cost the city of Sanford residents more if we merged. Um, I believe the county is going to do another calculation and let us see what it would look like now, um, but we have never done that because it would cost us more if we were with the county.
But when we do that study again, I want to know if it's short-term, more expensive, but long-term, maybe less expensive. Let's get the whole picture.
Derek Robertson.
Hello, my name is Derek Robertson, uh, one oh two East Coleman Circle in Sanford. I've lived in Sanford almost twenty years. Uh, I'm not a great speaker like some of these other people out here, I'm just a family man. Uh, I work two jobs to pay my bills, and my taxes go up every year. This is absolutely a tax. Um, we, the water bill that this guy paid was talking about, we, we pay a lot for that in Sanford. Sanford's a place for people who don't have a lot of money. This isn't Winter Park, you know, we're, we're Sanford, we're a place for families, where you can come, you can maybe buy your own home, be a homeowner, you know, get a little slice of the pie, and, uh, I think that you guys should, that budget that you just approved, I wish I had spoken then, because I feel like this money could come out of that, you know? We're all having to tighten our purse strings right now, you know? There's, uh, massive inflation, cost of groceries, cost of living, cost of gas, car insurance, health insurance, homeowners insurance, and now you add this on to us. I think the vibe is, everyone in this room, other than the elected body themselves, are opposed to this, and, uh, I do support law enforcement and the fire department and all our first responders, and everybody who works in the city. A lot of nice folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ashley Voorhees.
Hello, Ashley Voorhees, one oh two East Coleman Circle, Sanford, Florida, three two seven seven three. Um, the man that just spoke is my fiancee, partner, we live in the same house. I, too, also work two jobs, so between us, we work four jobs to support our two children. Um, basically, my grievances is, everything is really expensive. I mean, a lot of other people have done more research, and, and I appreciate those people because it's opened my eyes even more, hearing them speak. We all, as citizens, have to stand in the grocery store and make really hard decisions, and when you speak about budgeting and budgets being tight and needing to find money here and there, well, that's what we're dealing with on a daily basis, but on a much smaller scale, and our salaries are a lot less than some of the government workers who are also making these, you know, tight budget, um, cuts for cities and, you know, public places. So for me, adding this additional tax is unacceptable because, uh, quite frankly, we can't afford it, um, and then it's, as other people have kind of pressed on here tonight, it's when does it end, is, okay, we, we do this, but then when's the next thing going to come up, and all this, and, and for me, it's like, living in Florida and in the swamp, and this is no disrespect, but it's, it's really like, how many fires are there, you know? Like, what are we talking about? And when there are fires, I've only lived in Sanford for eight years, the only one that I've ever heard of, and like I said before, I don't have a lot of education on this matter, but from what I know, from my personal experience, was the one that happened down in, uh, the historical district, um, two historical homes burnt up and were not put out, they were just kind of controlled, and so for me, it's like, I look at that, and I'm like, well, what am I actually paying for? You know, I see them all get in their truck, and they go out to Tropical Smoothie Cafe in their big fire truck, how much does that cost? You know? I, I mean, I'm just saying, it's just, if we, the budget, you can find money somewhere, you can make little changes here and there, like we all have to do on a much smaller level at home, in order to afford things, instead of just being like, oh, well, we'll just, you know, make this assessment, and we'll have all, you know, the residents pay extra, and then that'll make up for the money that we don't have, and I don't have that in my life. I can't look and say, oh, well, who's going to pay for this? I have to come up and maybe get a third job to figure out how to pay for things, to put food on the table for my children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jody Sweet. Jody Sweet.
Um, Mayor, we, um, again, I, I, I appreciate all the champions, you all are our bosses, we, we can take it, we can take it, but I don't, I don't appreciate the disrespect to our hardworking men and women who lay their lives down on the line. I, I totally get what you're saying.
All right.
Just, just, you're just saying that they, that they're at, okay.
Jody Sweet. Okay, come on up, please.
Hi, Jody Sweet, one two six Dresden Court, Sanford, Florida, three two seven seven one. I don't actually have anything prepared, like everybody else did, but the fact that, that they were saying that this is not a tax, but y'all are sticking in our tax bill, and then threatening us with tax liens, and actually taking our property if we don't pay this special assessment. I worked as a paralegal before, I became disabled, and, I mean, I'm making like half of what I used to make getting disability. It's like nothing. We can barely afford what we have right now, and now our property taxes are going up, you want to hit us with this extra, uh, special assessment, which is not, if you're going to hit us with a tax lien for not paying it, you want to call it a special assessment, bill it separately. You can't take it as a tax then. You can't tax lien for that. I was a paralegal, I worked in condo and association law, and homeowners associations. Yes, special assessments, we could lien for those, but that was part of our declaration. Where can this, why is this assessment suddenly becoming a taxable thing, that y'all can take our homes, when we work hard? We worked really hard to have what we, what we have now, and we're still working hard to get it. We have. We have had to cut so much out because of me becoming disabled. I'm lucky to even be standing here right now. I've had so many close calls and surgeries that my poor husband has had to live through, and just the medical bills now on top of that as well. It's crazy, how do you expect all of us to come up with this money? I'm sure half the people here are on fixed incomes. Where are we supposed to get this money? I can't work. My husband's already been told, oh, you're already making as much as you can where you work. And that's total crap, by the way, because he puts in a lot of hours and they have him on a salary that is nothing. So we can barely afford what we have. And I just don't understand how y'all are threatening to take our homes now for not wanting to pay a special assessment, that y'all are trying to make it to a tax. And then, of course, increase that every year on us as well. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Bruce Tooman.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Tooman, and my family bought our Sanford house back in 1979, 306 Lakelo Drive, Sanford, Florida. And over the years, I have inherited the homestead. After graduating from UCF, I started my engineering and political career down in South Florida. Elected to the city of North Lauderdale Commission, 2002, 2006, serving as vice mayor and school board member of the nation's first City One charter high school. And back then, North Lauderdale were one of the first municipalities to create this fire assessment fee. It's a tax, it really is. It went to the Florida Supreme Court, who allowed a proportional percentage of our brave firefighters and paramedic costs to be used as his fee. North Lauderdale hired a very expensive consultant who stated it was 2080, but which is fire and which is public safety? As a licensed fire protect engineer, I understand how hard it is for our brave firefighters, especially when you talk about law structures. But is this tax fair? And also, are you also going after the property insurance carriers for firefighting fees? This additional tax, it's an easy way out for you guys, it really is. That if we can vote you guys out, we probably would. Unfortunately, you're all living a tax or this assessment on all properties, even those properties that are unable to vote for you all. I'm not homesteaded, so I can't vote for you all. So can you say taxation without clarification? Especially if I don't pay your tax, you're gonna take my property away? Please collect our taxes fairly and spend them wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, so, sir. Can you go next?
Kelly Scambati, I'm at, what is my address today? Sorry, my time.
Somewhere in Sanford.
Somewhere in Sanford, correct. I actually have multiple properties in Sanford, so I'm a landlord, and I would hate to go up on the rent on my tenants because of this tax, but more than likely, that's exactly what would happen. I know you guys put up a fiscal plan, I don't think it, I'm gonna say probably 50% of people don't understand what a fiscal plan looks like. I used to work for Vanguard in the fiscal planning department. And the fact that you guys are reflecting a change in your fire line, which went up, again, like the gentleman said, about 26% increase? And the fact that you guys are reflecting that this tax will be on top of that additional cost? Or would it remove as a, as a tagline? Because you either get to collect the taxes for the fire department, or you're gonna charge this fee. You're not clearly explaining that to your residents, which is, I think, a travesty for most of these people that may not understand what a fiscal plan is, how hard it is, how much work you guys put into it. We greatly appreciate your hard work, I honestly believe that. But being able to place a lien, and I've purchased tax liens, I've also had my father, who didn't know he was receiving a tax lien, and you guys sold his tax lien, and I had to go out and buy it because he didn't know that he didn't pay the taxes on time. So, I mean, and the fact I'm also on a deed and the notice was never sent to me is another conversation at that point. So I need you guys to be proficient in regards to how you speak to your residents to understand what a fiscal plan looks like. You just told the residents, hey, it's out there online, just go look it up. There is no drill down online regarding that fire line item. There's no drill down, breaking down what that cost is in reflection to what the additional cost would bring. Look, I'm all for firefighters. I have many friends that are firefighters and police officers here in Sanford. Look, you guys, I don't think everyone understands the role of the firefighter in our department. They not only take out fires, they also come and when someone is sick or ill, they are the first point of contact, well before any ambulance shows up. They have kept my neighbors alive for a very long time. I do believe they deserve the resources as long as they're the ones getting it. But again, I need you to clearly explain and express and market, and I believe these people should have a right to vote for what you're talking about before you guys have already decided on which direction you're going on this bill. Again, I thank you for my time, I thank everybody here today, because I love the passion of Sanford. I mean, I came here from up north after the Trayvon event, and telling people I moved into Sanford, being an African-American person was probably not the best thing, but all I see is love in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
And go Phillies.
Okay, so by show of hands, how many more people are going to want to speak?
Mayor, are we including the online? Are we including online request?
Just the people in the room.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you. By show of hands, oh, I may get myself in trouble here.
What, you're trying to be democratic?
I don't mind listening to everyone.
Me neither.
Excuse me, I want to ask our attorney if I can say something.
Yeah, excellent point. I don't, I don't disagree with him.
Trust me, we all appreciate your being here when you'd probably much rather be somewhere else. Okay, good.
All right. Our attorney has told me what I was about to do was a bad idea.
Keep you out of trouble.
So, after the, after we're done, I'll say what I was going to say. Okay, so... Don't say it any... Okay, well, move on. Okay, so, whoever else would like to speak, if you want to come up one at a time, I would ask that we have heard a lot of things. I think, I'll speak for myself, I definitely feel the emotion, I definitely feel the concern. I would like to, if there, specifically, if there's new things to add, rather than just repeating, we would appreciate that. But I will stay here as long as possible for everyone to hear, to speak. Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. What, what you didn't hear me say as you started talking was, I would stay here all night so everyone can speak. Ma'am.
Can I speak?
That, that's not what he's saying. It's okay.
We're gonna create a line, if you want to get in line in front of this officer, and we'll be able to see how many people actually want to speak. And we can move this on a little faster. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just hang your face.
We, we need everyone to be quiet so we can hear the comments, please. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Woodruff and Commissioners.
Quiet, please.
Good evening, Mayor Woodruff and Commissioners. My name is Lissette, and I am a homeowner at 2510 Laurel Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak on the resolution number 2025-3414, establishing the city's budget and capital improvement. First, let me say clearly, I support our firefighters, they're essential to our safety, and they deserve the staffing tools and equipment needed to protect our community. But I cannot support a budget that includes passing a new fire service fee to homeowners. We already pay property taxes, which is supposed to fund essential services like fire protection, asking to pay again through a separate fire assessment is essentially double taxation, and it fairly shifts the burden out to families, seniors, and fixed incomes and working people who are already struggling just to put food on the table and the rising cost of groceries. Florida Supreme Court and Lake County versus Water Oak Management held the fire assessment can only be lawful if they meet two standards. They must provide a special benefit directly to the property, and they must fairly... I can't say that word, I'm sorry.
Aportion?
Simply called a fire assessment is not enough. The city must show that homeowners will receive a unique property benefit beyond what the general public gets, and that the cost is distributed fairly. Right now, it looks more like a second tax laid on top of property tax, and that makes it questionable whether this assessment either meets the Water Oak standard. There are also other solutions, federal, state programs award millions every year for fire service. FEMA, Safe Grant Funds, firefighter salaries and benefits, which funds firefighter salaries and benefits. FEMA assistance to firefighters, grant covers vehicles, protection gear, and equipment. HUD Community Development Block Program can support public safety infrastructure. Florida also provides assistance on EMS trust fund grants. These programs are designed to cover the very cost the city says it needs without billing homeowners twice. Other Florida cities have secured millions this way without adding extra fees to their residents. Sanford should pursue these funding opportunities and adjust the existing budget before creating another financial burden for us homeowners. For this reason, I urge that to amend Resolution 2025-3414 to remove the fire assessment and assist direct staff to aggressively pursue available grants and fairly funded sources. This is the responsible path, and both supports our firefighters and protect our homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hello there, my name is Ernesto Malvinato. I reside at 101 Oak Ridge Court here in Sanford. And according to lobbyist, I'm sorry, legislative, Brodeur, Tallahassee had money for mental health, police, Seminole State, a million dollars for the airport, but no money for, for you guys, okay? But shouldn't you guys had money, funds allocated already? Just curious. No answer?
I don't understand your question.
I just asked you, shouldn't you have any money allocated for situations like this?
We, we have a budget that...
Okay, so wasn't this included in the budget?
No, as I mentioned at the beginning, this was a forward-looking option to make sure we can continue to maintain equipment at the fire department.
Okay, so, I'm a former housing commissioner here in Sanford. I just gotta say one thing. Over here in the letter, it says, send no money, this is not a bill. Sounds a little more like it's a threat, since, since it says, you know, if you don't pay up, we're gonna take your house, okay? So, and I noticed one thing, out of the seven of you, three of you haven't said one word. Please stop rubber stamping.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Sean Smith, 2772, River Landing Drive, here in Sanford. I believe in keeping a long memory, so I looked through the budget this weekend. 2026 revenue, just from tax receipts, property taxes, utility tax, everything, projected to be 64.86 million. On the same budget, which anybody can look up online, 2022 revenue was 42.3. So we're up 22 million in four years. Makes sense, city's growing, you guys should be bringing money in, that's 53% increase in tax receipts. You're asking for 2.13 million from this item. So, naturally, I'm looking at, we're talking about the city needing more money. What are you currently spending it on? The city commission, these five people here. Your traveling per diem costs over the last four years are up 935%. Conference and seminar costs are up 627%. The city manager's office is hiring somebody in the 2025 budget at a salary of 225K. To be fair, you could, you did, there were some other salary positions that were reduced, but that's a $225,000 salary. Medical insurance is ridiculous. So the communications office, 5% of the budget, it's up 85% over this four-year period. There's two people in the office according to the budget. Salaries are up 158% over four years, medical insurance is up 221% over four years. There's additional salary pays for these two people, up 336%. The Department for Economic Development is up in total cost over four years, 244%. There's three people in the office. 81% increase in medical insurance, professional dues that taxes pay for are up 92%. Promotional activities up 688%. Other contractual services up 587%. Again, this is over four years, not just one year over another, four years from 2022 to 2025. Community relations, two people, 14.2%, 4.2% increase. City clerk's office has three people. Repair and maintenance, 3300% over four years. Human resources, five people, 38% budget increase. Salaries are up 59%. Promotional activities up 183%. Other charges and obligations up 136%. Finance and accounting department, their traveling per diem costs are up 1,244% over four years. Let's see, IT salaries are up 122%. The IT department, makes sense, a lot of money coming in, city's growing, you gotta get things kind of modern, and there's a lot of things going on. Medical insurance in the IT department's up 200%, probably because you hired a lot of people. Purchasing department, 339%. Salaries are up 300% in that department. Let's see, so we're talking about fire. Fire administration is up 73% for nine people. Overtime, 1,400%, probably due to state law. Traveling per diem's up 54%. Other, at the end of the day, is there money to be found elsewhere? Can you, are we spending it the most efficiently? Appreciate you all being here, being late, thank you for everybody else being here. The budget's online, it's hard, you know, it beat watching the Gator game, I can tell you that, but... Like, and I'm not opposed to, like, the tax kind of makes sense because, you know, there's properties that are not paying it, and the firefighters gotta cover everybody, but if you're gonna raise the tax, you can't say there's a huge amount of money coming in over the last four years because the city has grown since 2020. The money's there, and I know y'all can find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Oldak, 128 Placowitz Court, resident of Sanford for 12 years now. I don't have a bunch of metrics and numbers and stuff like that. I wasn't even gonna talk in the beginning, but just hearing this and kind of seeing some of the things transpire, I feel like we should all get a voice up here. You know, the biggest thing I hear, it's, I think the biggest thing we all have trouble with is how this came out to begin with. How we just received this demanding letter of almost a threatening way of, give us money, or I take your house. But then you have the audacity to sit up here and say that we're your boss. So that makes no sense to me, and I think makes no sense to a lot of residents. If you want to tax existing citizens, I, I don't see why you would do that now. You chose to build out Lake Mary and create chaos on that road for the everyday people now that have to drive up and down, and now you want to tax us for it as well. There's just not a lot of sense from the people that we've voted to be in these seats, and it's very questionable. I don't see how this should be a cost for existing Sanford residents. I think that Sanford is a place that has allowed a lot of people to have affordable housing in a very good county, and it has a great infrastructure, it has a lot of good things, and you're watering that down with doing things like this. I'm hoping, and I think the residents here are hoping, that this is an actual discussion that you're gonna take behind closed doors and figure out the vote.
We don't discuss behind closed doors.
that I think a lot of us already think it is.
It's uncharming.
And, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, mayor, you didn't even have the letter when we got here. That, that is extremely scary, embarrassing, and disrespectful that we've all taken time out of our lives to be here and you didn't even educate yourself on the letter that you sent out to every resident sitting in this room. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello again, Leon Knechny, 216 South Elm Sanford.
I enjoyed seeing the pictures from your last vacation.
Just stay tuned, week from, a month from today. I remember my 10th birthday, 1962, so I'm, yeah, I'm old. I got a raise, I got a 10% raise. My dad raised my allowance from 50 cents a week to 55 cents a week. That was great. Now, I couldn't spend it all on one time, I had to save up from week to week, but I, I knew I had to save it and then I could go to the store and maybe buy a candy bar or something, there were six for a quarter back then. But it was a 10% raise, that's pretty nice. I remember my dad, when I was very young, taking us and the kids to the grocery store, he had a $20 bill and he would use that $20 bill, that's what groceries were. If he had too much, we put something back. If he didn't spend all the $20, we maybe got six for a quarter candy bars. So, that's what a budget is, you know, you learned to budget. I've been looking at the, the city's budget in the last couple of years. In the last five years, the other gentleman kind of mentioned it, you've gone up about an average of 12% a year in the general fund. So, five years ago, the general fund was taking in 25 million and change. This next year, it's gonna take in around 46 million and change, last year was 40 million. That's a five, five or $6 million increase. That's a, that's a 12% increase or 11.86 cents, I think the property praiser said. 11.6% raise. You know how much population has gone up in that time? An average of 2.14% per year. So, population's going up a little bit, but our taxes are going up because our property value is going up. That's, that's a good thing. But the city just ain't budgeting. You got the money, like, like the gentleman said, you're just not spending it. Not you, it's the city. You ought to be holding the city manager and the city department heads their feet to the fire because they are not budgeting properly. They're getting an extra $5 million this year in the general fund. And you want to, on top of that, you want another $2 million for a fire assessment fee. I'm a senior citizen, I'm on a fixed income. Last year, my ta, my Donald and, you know, all those people who do it, they gave me, they gave me a bit of an increase, right? I got a 2 and 1/4% increase in my social security, 2 and 1/4%. Last year, the, the garbage fee that you all charged me went up 4 point something percent. Stormwater, state the same, but water flow and a bunch of those other things, some of them went up, up to 10%. You gotta live within your budget. We don't deserve this. You deserve to go back and tell the city to budget properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leon.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Pastor Kathy Ramazan, 2707 West Airport Boulevard. As a matter of fact, I own a couple of properties. I'm not here because I oppose the safety at all, but I am here because I want to defend fairness. You guys say that, I've heard you say you're working for us, but I think my question tonight, because there isn't anything that's been said that I don't agree with, except maybe the punch at our, you know, our firefighters for having a smoothie. But everything else I agree, I agree with, so I don't want to repeat it. But one of the things I do want to ask is where are the exemptions for the elderly? I understand, we gotta raise the money somehow, some way, but where are the exemptions? We have older people who are on fixed incomes. And I know that you say it's not a tax, but you're just clothing it in something else. I respect each of you sitting here. I have no disrespect for any of you, but my question is where are the exemptions for low-income elderly, people who are living from paycheck to paycheck? And the threat is, what I feel, I think is to say that you will take our homes or their That's not fair. That's not you trying to work out a budget. I really felt like that line in that letter was overstepping, very much so. And we vote you here because we trust that you will do things that will be, you know, helpful for us, to represent us. And it's just sad, it's heartbreaking, you know? Where the, I know you're saying, you know, the, the developers, I know Sanford is growing, it's growing everywhere we look, there's buildings going up. And I know you gotta come up with more money, but what about the developers? Are they paying their fair shares? Are they? I mean, and you're saying it's not a tax, but it's...
Go ahead and finish up.
You're saying it's not a tax, but it feels like a quiet one. You know, a quiet tax, kind of goes in the back door, but then it moves everybody in the house out. It's a burden. This is a burden. It's a burden for, I have a 90-year-old mother, a 93-year-old grand aunt, 77-year-old sisters. All these people in my life are on fixed incomes.
Pastor, I need you to go ahead and wrap it up, please.
So, God bless you. I hope you guys go back to the table with this one.
Thank you, Pastor Ramazan.
I, I would like to, to point out, a lot of the language in the letter is set by state law. We did not sit down and actually write that letter. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is...
Thank the governor.
My name is Rick Ramazan and I'm at 2707 West Airport Boulevard. That was just my wife here. And I just want to second the motion that we do have a lot of elderly people in our family and one of them is my mother who is retired on a fixed income. And, you know, looking at the geographics in Sanford, there are a lot of elderly people who are retired here, who came to Sanford because it was a, you know, it was a family town and they raised their families here, as my mother and father did, and raised all of us here. I've been in Sanford all of my life and I've seen Sanford grow. I remember when Highway 46 was just a one-lane highway going into the woods. It was nothing there. So, Sanford has grown exponentially, but I'd never seen anything like this before, you know, a, a assessment or taxation that came in a letter form that we didn't have to have any vote for or we had no explanation of why the tax was being assessed. And I just want to ask this, just one question. How will this proposed tax increase the impact on different groups of people? Will it disproportionately affect low-income housing, seniors, or businesses? Was there any study done on that? Was there any assessment made on how it would affect the geographics of some people who are low-income and who are elderly and retired here in Sanford? And that's my question. I, I think that that assessment should be transparent, it should be on a website, and it should be somewhere where we can look at it and we could get an explanation of why this thing is happening. And that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Hello.
My name is Maricel Diaz and I live in Sanford. And I just wanted to, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk forever. I'm very disappointed with this letter, as you say, and many of us is not writing very well and there is no clarity, which should be, as college students should be very clear, the letter, as a high school. When we graduate, they request that and this is very disappointing for, for all of you guys, I'm sorry. Secondly, I'm opposed to double taxation. We already paying property taxes and every year increase. Home mortgage insurance for houses also increase every year. This year was 14%. And for you guys to increase or asking us to pay additional amount for service that we already pay in estate taxes is illegal. The third, I wanted to also say to Claudia, you know, we respect you as a human being and also we request the same from you. I see a body language from you, closing your eyes when someone is talking to you as a speaker, we also need respect. You did a couple times when the, the microphone was loud.
Oh, it was loud.
You did it like this instead to say, can someone please help and fix or adjust the microphone for the citizen? You didn't do that.
I appreciate that, thank you for saying that.
And one more thing, you also did something that was very, or you shut us, instead to asking, would you please quiet room so we can listen to you? You shut us and it's very disrespectful.
I appreciate that.
And I hope this goes into ballot because we all need to vote. And double taxation is not a representation. And budgeting, I am a single parent. In order for me to get a house, I have to, to get a requirement from the bank to work at least 75 hours to make the money so I can get a loan. And I did that. It cost me my health, but I did it. I purchased, I couldn't purchase a house in Altamont Spring along with because it's more expensive. However, I, thanks God, I did it over here in Sanford. I'm living two years here and the first year was an increase on my estate taxes, which it was not in my budget because I budget as well as a parent. If something is expensive, I have to cut it and I wish you guys also do that. If there's expenses that is not need, you guys cut it and put it out for the department, the safety. I value our fire department deeply and they have my all respect. But I heard that the money is not going over to them as well because they also wanna pay, if this goes through, they're gonna pay taxes in their property and the fire, it's not, it's not, it's not logical to do that to our citizens. It's not logical. So, if you guys went to university, you guys need, you have to have like management.
You need to finish up, please.
Please do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Huggins, 2493 Orange Avenue. Listen, everything that's been said tonight, I'm not gonna go through all those points again, but most importantly, saying no to this is not saying no to fire safety, all right? You do work for us. You have been a commissioner and a mayor, what, 15 years now? I moved here in 2014, you were a commissioner. So, you've been here a long time. You hired Norton. I have sat and, okay, you've had, you voted, you voted to keep him every time they voted to fire him. Every meeting I watch online, I have watched each one of you rubber stamp these developments and not raise their impact fees to cover the cost and that's why we're here. You did not do your job. You did not do your job notifying us properly. You're not fiscally accountable. So, here's my recommendation, because it appears you guys have already rubber stamped this and you're gonna do it anyway. What I say to the citizens, I have consulted an attorney and looked up online. I have a piece of paper here I'd like everybody's signature on. What we do as citizens when this happens is we petition our state senator, he was here tonight, Jason, and our House Representative, Rachel, I can't say her last name, P-L-A-K-O-N. Yes. And we send them a petition and they send, I'm gonna read it to you. "We, the undersigned residents and taxpayers of the city of Sanford, Florida, respectfully petition the following elected officials, Jason Bordeaux and Rachel Plaken, to submit a formal request to the Florida Joint Legislative Auditing Committee for the Auditor General to conduct a full, comprehensive, independent audit of the city of Sanford's finances. They will then be required to give it to," it falls under Florida Statute, Section 11.45, "a formal request to JLAC for a comprehensive audit." That's our only option, guys, because they're gonna do it. This is taxation without representation. We should be voting on this and you all should be fired."
Do you guys need a second to take a breath?
No, go ahead. We're used to this.
So, I'm gonna change the tone a little bit and it's not that I don't support everything that's been said before me, but I just want to pose a different solution. I wholeheartedly support funding our fire service. What I'm concerned about is that adopting this assessment right now might be premature. The bill that you mentioned earlier that caused you to consider what the expenses might be is House Bill 929. They have just had listening sessions, they haven't even made the rules yet, and the bill itself says that you are encouraged to change those shifts. Now, it encourages firefighter employers to implement schedules that do not exceed 42 hours per week. This reflects a recognition at the state and more importantly, an international level that the schedules that they work take a significant health and mental toll on our first responders. That is what the bill is about. If schedule changes are required in the future, that could impact staffing models, overtime costs, and how we structure our budget and we don't yet have a clear picture of what that will mean for Sanford. It has been said that this assessment would provide better coverage, but if that funding is primarily intended to offset shift, shift changes, we need to be honest and adjusting schedules doesn't increase the service, it just changes the schedule of the people providing the service. Unless we actually add more firefighters at the other schedule, then it would not provide better service. Units available on the street will remain the same. It's important to remember, most important, that what's really at stake is that our firefighters don't just work here. I have to comment on the smoothie comment and a couple of the others. They live at the station one-third of their lives and that's only if they're not required to work mandatory overtime or cover shift call or whatever the case may be. They miss holidays, birthdays, and weekends with their family. The entire reason behind House Bill 929 is to recognize the toll that it takes both mentally and physically. And just for the record, this is not only about fire calls. 70 to 86% of their workload is EMS, responding to medical emergencies that are often more demanding and stressful than fire incidents. Sometimes they might need a smoothie and sometimes that smoothie may be all they get for lunch and dinner between calls. Also, it's much easier to drink a smoothie in a bouncy rescue than a steak and baked potato. I'm almost done. I'm sure this proposal was not brought forward quickly or easy and I want to thank all of you for the due diligence that went into it. you for the due diligence that went into it. I also recognize that much of the federal funding that was available in recent years and mentioned earlier has now either expired or been reduced significantly, which makes local funding solutions all the more important to consider. So my request is this, let's pause long enough to fully evaluate how House Bill 929 will affect staffing, operations, and costs. Let's make sure any assessment that is approved is based on accurate data and truly enhances service while keeping firefighter health and safety at the center of the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name, ma'am?
Wendy, oh, I forgot that. Wendy Molton.
Thank you, Wendy.
Palmetto Avenue.
Michael Pallone, 2607 Mohawk Avenue, Sanford. Thanks for everybody for being here tonight. I know it's crazy. You're getting beat up a little bit tonight. I don't know if it's all necessarily warranted. I'm kind of on the fence about this because like everybody here, I do support, of course, our EMS, our fire. I'm a nurse myself. I've lived in Sanford for 25 years. I have a brother that, a brother-in-law that is a firefighter. I had an uncle that was a fire chief. I get it, you know, it does cost money. Fire trucks cost a lot of money, you know, but when we get a letter, I guess what took me back is when I got this letter, it didn't really have a lot of details on the why. You're telling us we got to pay you money, but it didn't go into the why. And that's where I have a problem. You were really clear on how much we had to pay. You were really clear on what would happen if we did not pay. But you didn't really tell us what you needed for. And that's what people need in this day and age. We need to know what's going on because we're struggling. So we need to know why you feel like you need this money from us. Because maybe it's warranted, but we don't know unless you give us that information. My other issue is the letter was sent out, I got it, I think, middle of August. You'd already had, I guess, one or two meetings by then. I watched them online and I was like, man, I wish I was there. There's only nine people at one of them. Look at how many people are here tonight. Send out those letters a little earlier. Let people know so they can come in in smaller groups and it's not so frustrating and volatile. You know, let people know. Communication and transparency is huge in gathering support for something like this and you need that if you want it to go smoothly. Uh, okay, let me skip around here. I'm going to run out of time. The letter, yeah, I talked about that. Mail the notices sooner. Sorry, I wasn't really super prepared with the speech. The main thing is, you know, again, going about the why. So, you know, you did this study, which is wonderful and you explain, you know, how you, you're going to charge the money and how you figured out this tier one and two and all that. But again, where was the data letting us know? For example, hey, we don't have enough firefighters to meet quality standards. And whatever those quality standards are, I don't know if they're citywide, I don't know if they're state, if there's a national, you know, bar that you're trying to meet or whatnot, but whatever it is, our response times, are we behind on response times to fire EMS calls? Is that why you need more money? Are our fire trucks literally falling apart? Is that why you need more money? And as tonight, as we talked about this, Mayor, you yourself said, this is not an emergency, it's not a budget emergency, it's not a deficit, it's not a shortfall. So to me, that says that this really isn't necessary at this time. You're describing a situation that's not an emergency to a bunch of people that financially are in an emergency. Literally. So many of us right now are struggling to pay our bills. We go to the grocery store and we get sick. I don't, I don't put, I don't put cheese on my turkey sandwiches anymore because cheese is too expensive. I was grocery shopping with my wife the other day and I said, you know what, we're not buying cheese anymore. I'll just put turkey and mayo on it. But yet I got to come up with $150 or 40, whatever it is, to pay for the fire that it's not a necessary thing. So please, I just need about 10 more seconds. Just consider these things to the people that you're asking the money from. Okay? Understand our situation and understand that we haven't had a lot of time. I know you've had a lot of time to prepare for this. I just found out about this a couple of weeks ago and as many of us did, from that letter. Send that letter out sooner so we can be more prepared to discuss with you and be participants in that process. At a bare minimum, please, if it's possible, do not vote on this right now. If you can possibly delay this, maybe it's a good thing, but we need more time. Table it. Please. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Nettles, homeowner at 407 South Summerlin Avenue. And I am a single mom with a 10-year-old son at home that I really need to get back to and get him in bed so he can go to school in the morning. I have an issue to discuss that's not on the agenda and I'm asking for permission. I don't know when it's appropriate to talk. Can I, can I move forward?
After this, but you're already up there, so if you can do it in two minutes and 30 seconds, go ahead.
All right, perfect. I will cut straight to the chase. All right, so on my sleepy little street, I've lived there for over 20 years, which seems surprising since I'm not that old. And I'm four generations from Sanford, so I've got really deep roots here. And something very alarming to our street and our neighborhood just happened. They installed four new streetlights without any prior notification to the residents. These streetlights are glaring, glaringly bright.
Not to cut you off, we're aware of the streetlights and I'm looking for our Public Works Director, is he still back there somewhere?
He might have an answer for you already.
Do you mind if I direct you to him?
Sure.
And Sarah, I've been to your house. I totally understand.
Mine's the blue.
I got the pictures.
Yeah. It's really horrible.
Yeah, it's bad.
Okay, so can I just say this one thing?
Go ahead.
I've gotten to the bottom of who's responsible, who the parties are, and FPL and Farreran Construction will not make any adjustments until they get a sign-off from the city. They agree with me that they are completely inappropriate lights and they're suggesting shields, but these lights are at least 10 feet taller than all the codes and regulations. And the candlelight wattage is completely off the charts. We don't need them shielded, we just need them removed. We don't want them.
All right.
And it's at least $50,000 that they spent on this, so that's some money that you guys can have for other budget concerns.
Well, except that was FPL that spent that.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, can you, can you speak with her, please? Thank you.
Um, just for a second too, Sarah, I wanted you to know that I came out there and I visited your street and it does look like a football stadium out there. We have been working on it, we are working with FPL. I know that it's an inconvenience, it is not something that we're ignoring. One of the residents asked for those lights for the safety and it went overboard, but I totally get it. I see you and your complaint is not being ignored and thank you for your patience.
Yep. All right.
I've got to use my restroom.
Hi again. Good evening. This is Bachan and I live in 3461 Windsor Lake Circle. I definitely respect all the firefighters and the police and all they do. I'm not here to oppose anything against them. I just wanted to correct something in the assessment. You call a single home, I really don't live in a single home, I live in a townhouse. So I've been with my lodaresses, I am a single home and I need to pay, the lodarist received says I will be charged 88.48 this year with the fee allowed to increase by up to 10% every year citywide. This will arise over 2.1 million annually. That is a significant burden on homeowner and top of property tax we already pay. Just to let you know, Luca, your tax property is 1,000 more compared to last year. I received the letter like this week. I just want to know, before creating a new fee, I believe the city owes its resident full transparency, how much money is already budget for fire protection? What has that money been spent in recent year? What gap exists that makes this extra charge necessary? And I wanted to know, how did you guys pay firefighter before? Because the last time I recall, when I called 911, my bill was $850. So that doesn't cover your assessment and then to let everybody know the assessment, how much it costs, it came from your tax, the general fund tax. So everything we paid for the study, we didn't even ask for if we do that one assessment or not. So I would just say, please don't vote yes. And if you do, I mean, I am nothing here and I just have to obey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nate Moore, 140 Sterling Pine Street. I'll keep it pretty brief. I just want to make one point. I think if you asked anybody in Sanford, they probably would not want to pay a new assessment, but I think that there are a lot of people that would understand the fiscal and strategic benefit of this. And I just want to kind of represent them because I don't think that they are, that they're not going to show up to a meeting at, you know, 9 o'clock on a Monday. So I just want to like provide a voice to those folks that aren't here tonight. So with that, I'm going to skedaddle before the fruit starts flying.
Thank you.
How you doing? Good evening. I'll say this call Smith, 1213 Grand Island Way. I was going to start this a little different, but I made a prediction over the weekend and I lost. It was a powerball. Same thing you're doing here. You're making a prediction on what's the outcome of the following year and that just, it's not good. So taxes, where does the money go? Most cities, including Sanford, collect from property tax, sales tax, state and federal grants, fees and permit. That gets pooled, gets distributed across departments, fire, police, parks, public works, administration, and more. Budgets are political documents. They reflect priorities, not just needs. If fire protection isn't getting enough, it's not because there's no money, it's because someone chose to put it elsewhere. If city leadership chooses to place it elsewhere, then fire protection was not a priority. So now, not only are we being asked to pay extra for fire services, but we are indirectly paying extra for everything else. Police, parks, public works, and administrative overhead. By proposing a separate fire assessment, Sanford is essentially admitting we did not prioritize fire protection in our existing budgets, so now we're asking you to pay more. Yes, homeowners already fund fire services through general taxes, but then those funds are diverted whether to inflated budgets, discretionary projects, administrative expansions, police. City then turns around and says, we need a new fee to cover what should have been funded in the first place. That's not just inefficient, it's a breach of trust. The fire assessment isn't about funding, it's about priorities. Sanford already collects enough revenue to cover essential services. If fire protection is underfunded, it's because the city chose to place it lower on the list. Asking residents to pay again is not a solution, is a symptom of misallocation. We deserve transparency, not a surcharge. And let's not, let's not ignore the explosive growth in housing development. That growth equates to increased tax revenue. So where's the money going? Lastly, let's be honest, non-add Valorem fire assessment aren't about response to speed, they're about covering budget gaps created by poor prioritization. If it's mandatory, reoccurring, and funds a core public service, it functions as a tax in practice. Whether you call it a fee or an assessment, it's still a charge imposed. The city commission often votes in favor of proposals like the fire assessment fee if it's backed by financial studies, long-term planning goals, like the gentleman here. But what, where was the study of long-term planning goals and neglect assessment repairs conducted and referenced prior to August 5th, 2025? I have one more. Home valuation increased 60% in just four years. Property tax growth between 2019 and 2023, 35% and still growing. Extra from residents in tax revenue is there. 10%, 10 percentage points higher than the US average.
Sir, I need you to wrap it up.
I will. Fire Station 40 was approved, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So the $2 million is where the fire trucks? You approved Station 40 but said, hey, where are the fire trucks? That's what happened.
Now, we bought those with impact fees.
You also had other, other structures, 47 active communities, 2,000 homes developed in that growth. KB Homes, Plute Homes, Toll Brothers, Beazer Homes, Lancy, Hanover.
Sir, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Growth should have been offset.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Landau. I live at 2302 Sanford Avenue, Sanford, Florida, 32771. I may speak low because I just finished having a double heart operation, so there's going to be three quick questions. Our governor is working very hard to get the property tax out of, out of, out so we don't have to pay any more property tax. What are you guys going to do if he gets this passed up in Congress and through the Senate up there in Tallahassee? What are you going to do when that happens? Number two, I have a security alarm system where if something happens inside of five minutes, I have a fire department, I have the police department, I have the ambulance at my house. My wife just finished having a diabetic coma and inside of five minutes, I had eight fire people at my house fixing her up and getting her going. And one other thing is water. Five years lived at the house, my water bill for two people was $79. All of a sudden, it's now 115, 120, and I use the same amount of water. And the response I got was, oh, we put a new system in, we put new meters in, so you got to pay for them. Well, that is a bunch of baloney because they have, they get, they have their money right there and then and we shouldn't have to be taxed on that or even pay for that. That's on them. And for me, being 76 years old, this extra burden is getting to be too much. That's it.
Thank you, Rick. Thanks for your service.
I would like to address the, if the state does away with property tax, what we have heard is one way to handle that would be a 15 to 16% sales tax and we would depend on the state for funding for city services. The fire assessment could be used to fund the entire cost of the fire department, but we would not have that option for a police department. So if property taxes go away, something will have to replace them. Sir?
We'll be in big trouble.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Now, my name is Kevin Sims. I work, I live at 2101 South Palmetto Avenue. I'm not going to do what everybody's been doing so far tonight. I don't think I need to beat a dead horse any more than it has already been beat. I would like to thank you for starters for having the forethought, be forward-thinking and looking at ways that you want to help fund the fire department. I am getting ready to hit my 30th year in the fire service here in Seminole County. Chief Radzak, who's running away from me here. 30 years ago, I sat next to him in paramedic school, so I've been in this area for a long, long time. Now, with regards to the forethought, Mr. Mayor, you've said many times that we're not in any form of a financial distress of any kind. So if you were to vote no for this, I'm assuming that business would go on as usual the very next day. Am I wrong?
For at least this year.
For at least this year. So all I propose, it's a very simple thing. People have mentioned the penny sales tax. The county commission did not impose that on the citizens. They allowed them to vote on it and they decided that's what they wanted. If there is no impending financial doom that goes with this, I simply suggest, it's very simple, you vote no for this, put it out to the public, let us vote for it next year. If we want it, we'll take it. If we don't, we don't. Very simple. Madam Commissioner, you said, and I believe both of you have said on more than one occasion tonight, that you work for us. Well, then, actions speak louder than words.
And you get bonus points for the shirt.
Thank you. So far, I don't believe that there has been a single person who's come up to this podium to voice support for this measure, so it sounds as though.
One did.
Okay, I'll give you one.
Sort of one.
So it sounds as though the voice of your constituents has been heard. Now, it's up to you. Are you going to listen to them or are you going to forget the actions over the words? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to wait, make you wait just a minute longer because I want to respond to something he said.
Of course.
Unfortunately, there's not a mechanism in state law for this to go. Unfortunately, there's not a mechanism in state law for this to go to a public vote. We follow the state law in this process. There's a mechanism if we want to use property taxes to fund debt to go to the public for a vote. If we want to, if the county wants to do the sales tax, there's a mechanism for that to go to a vote. Unfortunately, in this representative government, we have, the decision on this type of fee or tax, because it really is the same thing, is left to the commission. So we certainly are listening to the opinions of our voters.
So, but the thing is, is that if this weren't to pass, there are other measures that are available in the future that the citizens can vote on to fix this problem?
I don't think so. No. There are none that are direct voter... Anyway, go ahead.
Good evening. Breezy Johnson, 909 Magnolia. I understand leadership, and I greatly appreciate yours. My only ask in your leadership tonight is to listen to all the people that spoke, and not just tonight, but the many times that we've been coming to these meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on the fire fee?
Thank you for admitting it was a tax.
Okay, I mean, it's the definition the state uses, which is why we use that. But we all realize it's money that the city is asking residents to pay. Sir?
All right. It is, good evening to everybody that have come out here with this major concern. I don't live in Sanford, but I pastor in Sanford.
What's your name?
My name is Pastor Michael Imperato. I pastor on 1714 Historic Goldsboro Boulevard. Amen. I've been there for 32 years. Amen. And we have done a lot of work there, and as I hear my other brother here, amen, with the ministry and the work that we do, amen, trying to help people, amen. And it is to bring them closer, it is to the Lord, amen. And it's kind of hard, it's kind of rough, amen, especially on 13th Street, amen, as I seen just a little few changes there in 32 years, amen. The only thing they did was they put some pavers down, and put some new sidewalks, and put some trees, and put some lights, amen, and things like that there on that street, amen. So that's in 32 years that I've been there, amen. So there is a lot of responses, amen, from the fire department, amen, the rescue, amen, they pass by every day, amen. They're working, amen, they're doing their job, amen. But it is proposing something like this, amen, on the residents, amen. It's already hard times as it is. I was looking at that word up top right over the imposition. You know, imposition means opposes, you know, unfair, amen, a burden. That's what that word means, imposition, on that letter here. I received one, and the church received one. But it's just something, amen, that it is the residents, and it is the people here in Sanford. I love Sanford, amen. I've been here for some years here with the people, and I go all around, amen, and I'm out among the people, and that's what it's gonna take right there to bring us together. But I pray that it is tonight right there that y'all will table this. Mostly, and a lot of other city commissions and county commissioners, amen, their hearts and minds are already made up of what you're gonna already vote on, you know? But you need to look at the people, and you need to look at the surrounding, and our environment, and everything was taking place, because everything is going up, amen. And if you ain't really out there in the field, working in the field, and then seeing what's taking place, you'll never know. But it is, I just pray, it is tonight right there that the Spirit of God, amen, will right there change your heart right there and table this. And then, even like one individual said, maybe just table it to next year, and then we'll just see what else y'all can do on this matter. And then, I think things will work out if you just wait, amen, on this thing, and just listen to these people, because their hearts is really burdened tonight, amen. And I just want to thank you, ready, for the time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Last chance, anyone else wish to speak?
Art.
I'm gonna let everyone speak that wants to.
My name is Bob Tumpack. I live at 104 Maplewood Drive here in Sanford, 32771. I am absolutely impressed with how much heartfelt feelings I heard tonight. When I was riding down here with my wife, the weather was pouring down rain, and I said, "Donna," I said, "I bet there won't be half a dozen people here." And I was thoroughly amazed by the turnout, with the weather being as poor as it was. And it was truly inspiring that so many people had come forth and pleaded their case about how they were struggling, and how we needed to spend our money as best we could to make do with what we needed. I've lived in Sanford for 45 years, I've worked for the power company for 50 years. And it scares me when I watch the growth that's happening in Sanford, because I wonder about the fire department, but I think we're beginning to outgrow our utilities. There's gonna come a point where our water can't supply all the apartments we're building, our wastewater can't supply it. We're gonna run into road problems and lots of problems. We need to be careful that we don't let these developers strip out our utilities, and we have to use these assessments to back up some of these shortfalls that are gonna happen. The fire department is just one, but we're open a Pandora's box that we may not be able to put the lid back on. And I'm really impressed with the people in Sanford. I've only lived here 45 years, so I can't say I was born here, but I certainly love this town, and I want the best for it. And I don't want to have to watch people in grocery stores having to put stuff back on the shelf because they have to pay for a fire service that some developer has developed land out there, and they need equipment to reach a four-story building when most of the people who are paying the bills are living in little, single-level houses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir?
I wanted to say something, but come back. I'm not gonna let you walk down here. My name is Breezy Green, I'm of 2625 Denver, St. Paul, Kansas. I've been here about 14 years now. I'm glad to see a few of you have made it through some health issues as well as my family. We've all had the same thing. I think you all pretty much know how we feel, but me personally, I have a choose between the air conditioner, the transmission from our car, please come up. I'm still working on that transmission, but I'm not getting special assistance. My husband, my brother, his mom, he's out with his... Please, please.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. I would start off by saying that no one up here is your enemy.
Not one.
And we are certainly not your enemy on social media. I know we have people who love, as soon as any comment is made, to find all the negative things they can say about us or about the city. But I am very proud of the city and the work that we do, and I will stand by every decision I've made. Now, some of you have threatened votes. I don't make decisions based on whether I'm gonna be re-elected or not. That's for people who really want this job really badly for themselves, not want the job for the city.
Right.
So as always, I will continue to make decisions for the city. Now, when we started this process back in October of last year, maybe, you know, being proactive, which we're often accused of not being proactive, to look and see, how can we make sure that in the future, we can fund the fire department? I don't know why firefighters are going around saying they don't get the money, because this can only be spent for the fire department. But when we look at that, we look at, you know, we could fund the entire cost of the fire department, almost not the whole cost, because some of it's EMS, but, you know, $15 or $16 million, I think it would have been an average of $700 or $800 per home. And we said, "No, let's not start there. Let's look at just setting it to capital, okay, and work from there." You know, in the future, we may need to fund the entire fire department from this assessment, maybe we don't. But this would be a place to start. But back in October, we did not know everything we know now. We did not know that the county was going to have three tax increases. We didn't even know what our budget was going to look like at that point, when we started the process. We couldn't send the letters out until we had gotten far enough along in the process. Again, state law says when things have to happen. And I'll own that we should have sent something else with the letter explaining it. I will take full responsibility for that one. But looking at it now, as we have said, we're not in a budget crisis. The people who have said, "Oh, we've mismanaged, and now you gotta come back for me," that's not true. If this were to pass, we would actually be able to fund some extra things in the fire department that we were putting off. But at this point in time, I question if this is the right thing to do. And I will pass it on to the rest of the commission.
I'm ready to speak. I am. I wrote down every comment that I could. Morgan, Jean, John, Connor, Yamala, Daniel, Ashley, Judy, Bruce, Kellis, Asete, Ernesto, Sean, Leon, Kathy, Ramasaw, Hector, the pastor from Riverwalk, Vanessa, John, so on and so forth. I'm just as passionate about you, about this, as you all. Mr. Donaldson said, when he looked out to the audience, he said, "Everyone in this room feels this effect." That means everyone, because your mayor is a teacher. He gets the same feed that you all get. I do firmly agree that the city should have, could have, and in the future, we need to do better with communicating with our residents about how we do these things. There are meetings that we've had, that we've communicated, we put information out. Yes, we can, and we will do better. But there are some people who are at these meetings that got up to speak, they have the same access to public records, to the meeting agendas, as everyone else. You all may have got the letter, but let's take some ownership in ourselves, too, because there are people who got up to speak, which I totally agree with everyone that had to say, that come to every single meeting. Again, I echo what the mayor said, this was our attempt to be proactive. We are always said, "We are reactive, we do not think of things." So we were trying to think of a way that we could think about the future. But it's so easy to say, "Cut the expensive things," until it's time to cut the expensive things, right? I totally understand what everybody is saying about the jobs. I am a city commissioner who works three jobs. I gave up my position at the city to take this position, so I take it very seriously. I care about what it is that you have to say. I haven't heard anyone say that they want this. A lot of times, the decisions that the commission has to make is not what the people have to say. I agree with the mayor, I think that this is something that we just, we thought we were doing the right thing, and maybe it's not the right thing, and we should take it off the table.
Yeah. 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 Thank you.
I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't have to say a lot. You guys said enough for us to be able to get an understanding, and like both of them have said, we didn't look at it like this. And all of us are gonna be affected, just like you guys. We know we're not gonna make everybody happy, but we know we need to look at this in another way. So I agree with you guys as well, that we need to be able to look at this and do something different than doing. I won't vote yes tonight, for sure. So we need to find another way.
I'm a little, I'm a little struggled here. Are either of y'all gonna make a motion?
Well, I don't have a problem with making a motion, but I don't want to speak before we have discussion.
All right.
You can make a motion if you want.
I will make a motion to deny this, but at first, I will say, I do not like the disparaging remarks made against our staff, made against the dedicated professionals that helped put this together. You can bash us up here all day long, I don't care, okay? I've got 30 years of working for the Orange County Sheriff's Office, okay? I did 18 years of volunteering at Seminole High School here in Sanford. I got bashed everywhere I've been, okay? I get it. I take it. That comes with the job, that comes with our $24,000 a year salary we get sitting up here, okay? I do not like the fact that you disparage the people that put hard time and effort into putting these budgets together. They go through them tightly. The fire chief sitting here, every year, comes to us and asks for more staff, more equipment, more everything. And we almost always find a way to make it happen. Is that not true, chief? We are not in a deficit, we are not in a crisis, we are looking for a way to help fund the fire department and ensure that it remains as good as it is. And my desire and hope as a city commissioner, since I've been here, is to get our public safety personnel, being the highest paid in this county, and one of the higher-paid public safety personnels in central Florida. We have accomplished that now with our police department. We are working on that with our fire department. That is all done through negotiations and union contracts. It's not set by anybody up here, okay? There's a process that we have to follow for everything we do, even this ridiculous letter I got in the mail. I hated it when I got it. But we had to follow the law. We could only send you what the law said, and it had to have the proper verbiage. Is that not true, Ms. Green?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we tried to modify it.
Yes, and we tried to modify it, we tried to put some stuff in there, and it's still... I said earlier at the workshop, which I don't think hardly anybody was here, I thought we did a horrible job communicating this, as usual. That's just the way government works. Communication and government are just, they're oxymorons, okay? We have hard-working staff that look for every dime they can, from every outlet they can. A lot of people read things, and they see things, and they think that we could use this or do that. But at the end of the day, we have a hired professional at the end of this dais that says, "That's legal, that's not legal, that's a good idea, that's not a good idea, you're opening yourselves up to this, and that, and so forth." And it is incumbent upon us to listen to her. We don't always have to agree with her, but it is incumbent upon us to listen to her and make decisions to keep this city from facing any kind of legal ramifications of decisions we make. And that is something all of us have to think about constantly, we have to follow constantly. So again, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna make a motion to deny this, okay? The people have spoken. Please let us finish our job here, and then y'all can cheer and everything else later on. But let us finish this job tonight, and thank you for coming out, and thank you for your passion, okay? This isn't rubber stamped, this is a process. Everything we do is a process. We have had meetings coming up to this, but... We have had meetings coming up to this, but they were a process. We didn't fully discuss or vet all of this until tonight, because that wasn't part of the process, until tonight. That's why all of y'all got a special invitation. That's why all of y'all got notices on social media. That's why we put notices out through the media, which I guess is left. So, everything we do is a process. Everything we do has legal ramifications, and everything we do has to follow Florida State statute. That's what we did here. That's what we always do here. And we always do the best we can to have a fully-staffed public safety unit, both police and fire, the best staff we can for public works, the best staff we can for this building, the best staff we can for utilities. We do the very best we can. We have had to increase salaries across the board over the last few years, even based on the new minimum wage law. I had to fight for that a couple of years ago, to raise salary for that. Those of you wondering what all the money has been in the increase in the public safety funds, a lot of that is salary. A lot of that is salary. This commission that sits here today, minus our new friend, Commissioner Thomas, has fought hard to get the salary for our public safety and all of our staff up to par. Okay? So, those of you that went through the fine-tooth comb of the budget, yeah, you saw some increases in there, but they are much needed. We are a very poorly-paid city. Okay? But this group up here has fought hard to make it better. And you know what comes along with that? What comes along with that is better-qualified employees, and employees who come to work every day and want to give us the best they can. Okay? That's what we continue to fight for here. And the same with this fire fee. The fire fee was for us to make sure that our fire department always has the very best equipment we can provide them. They are constantly having to get new gear, new trucks, and just like your homes have gotten more expensive to run, so has this fire department. So has our police department. So has this building. So, my motion is to deny this, and that's it.
I second.
Further discussion?
Commissioner Austin said so much of what I wanted to say, so now I can be shorter.
I was reading mine.
Just say ditto done.
Ditto done. This all took me back to times when I've been out there as a citizen like you have, going to other commission meetings and having my voice heard. So, it's nice, in a way, to be on this side of it and hear you doing the same thing, and I really, really appreciate that. I agree that, I wish we could have done outside the legal with the letter and made it just so much simpler and easier to read and understand. But, yeah, we had to do certain things legally. I would love for us to have done it sooner as well, because as soon as we had that letter ready to put out, and we had done earlier things, we were all up here thinking, it's, nobody's going to pay attention to this until they get that letter in their hands, and sure enough, here you are. So... When I was campaigning for this position, I spent a lot of time thinking about trying to think long-term and not just band-aiding things. So, as Commissioner Austin was saying, and the mayor was saying, and everybody else up here, really, this kind of thing does make me think it's trying to think long-term. What do we need in the future? Capital improvements, not just band-aiding things for the chief and his staff. But here we are. I looked at this in thinking, if I, I am a citizen, I am paying for this like the rest of you, what would I see as my options? What are our options? And the way I see it is, we could pass it as-is and try to focus on the fact that it is long-term, more apartments are paying more, nonprofits are contributing, it's more equitable, or we can fail this and evaluate this merger with the county, which does sound like we might end up paying more, but I still want to explore the possibility of maybe a long-term savings there, so I'm not going to give up on that. Another option might be fail it and evaluate our budget with some third-party help. Now, I've looked at the budget like, one guy came up here and said in detail, trying to figure out where we can make some changes here and save some money. And wiser heads than mine have said, you know, "We're barely able to cover the expenses we have, but we do have a balanced budget." So, there's that. Another option would be, let's delay it, as we've been talking about, until maybe next year, which would do a couple of things. Number one, let the citizens recover from the county tax increase. And number two, give us more time, and you more time, to understand this, to explain it, to do a better job communicating it, given what we have to do legally. So, option D is my preference, which would mean, we're going to deny it tonight, give it some more time to be absorbed, and revisit it next year.
Right. So, in terms of revisiting it, if we deny it tonight, we're all the way back to the very beginning of the process.
The whole process, all over again.
So, a whole new study.
Another fee to your consultant.
Right. So...
You help us, okay.
Tracy Orr, attorney, we had a number of letters come in. Do we need to identify them or read them?
I would go ahead and identify and read the letters. How many do you have, Mayor?
Well, I've got two, but we had many more.
I think I have ten, but some of them we've all gotten.
I did give you all some in your agenda packet.
Yeah, I got those.
And I have some extra that came in, and then the mayor has a handful of emails that I received as well.
So, what do we need to do?
I would go ahead and identify, and you could summarize the content for the letters.
Karen Ash says that the city manager and the mayor need to go, because we do not know what we're doing. Although, they also didn't get it quite right about what we're doing with the survey on Mark Fuller is against it. He bought his house when it was affordable and does not want costs to go up. Those people were here and spoke. Who else do we have?
And Jelli Williams, Masters in Social Work, voiced her concern about the imposition and collection. Increase in costs would impact some of the citizens with low incomes, who are currently struggling to make ends meet in the present economy, according to the proposal. Aline will be placed on the property, yada, yada. Pretty much the same thing. She did suggest adjusting the rates if somebody's over sixty-five or disabled, so we've heard that.
Did you get Amy Golds?
We are interested in what you are looking at.
And we got a letter from Donaldson Woody, but he spoke.
Yep.
Saying what he said.
We got one from Amy Golds.
Pedro Ortiz is currently retired on fixed income, and questions for necessity and fairness. Aaron King sent the form letter that was passing, being passed around, about it being double taxation, regressive. We haven't looked at alternative funding, and voters should be allowed to vote on it. I don't understand that one at all.
Carol Barnes says, "Let the county take it over." Winter Springs, Castleberry, and Altamont did. Look into private ambulance service to do the transporting of medical calls.
American Bridge Advisors is against it. Okay?
Robin Johnson, same form letter as the others.
And did you get Jamika Laster?
Okay. The attorney says we're good.
Okay.
All right. So, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passions and animus, Lee. Thank you very much for going through the process with us. Thank you for setting a record for a number of people at a public hearing while I've been mayor. And what the attorney would not let me do is, you know, there were times when I was out there, and I always wished, there were little lights up here that would tell you which way people were leaning, so you would know whether you still needed to come up and talk some more, or you figured you had won the case and you could stop. But I was not allowed to tell you what direction my light was pointing, so... Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for coming.
We still have a meeting! We're talking about thank you all for coming. We still have a public meeting.
We still got things to do.
We're going to get to the boring stuff now.
There's still more work to be done.
Right!
Y'all can stay.
No, let's stay for the other item.
Sure, sneak out on us.
Is this intermission?
We've still got meeting to do.
We still have a meeting, ladies and gentlemen.
Our meeting is not over, John.
I need a nap.
Okay, so, we're up to citizen participation, right? Somehow, I thought this would, the reason I did that whole thing was I thought it was in regular items. Okay. So, is there a Michael Felber here? Michael Felber?
Did he stick it out?
Or Martin de Brescure? Okay? Neither of them are here. We'll move into citizen participation. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? Mr. Spoor, I believe you wanted to.
How we doing?
Very well, sir.
Chase Spoor, 436 Scott Avenue, Sanford, Florida.
Don't shush them, you'll get yelled at.
Last Thursday, at the very end of the three-hour, much like tonight, planning and zoning meeting, minutes after I left the room, the commission passed a motion to reconsider the conditional use approval for 1219 Park Avenue. I bring this matter to you today frustrated and disappointed with how this process continues to unfold. From the beginning, I've done what a citizen is supposed to do. I've invested time, my resources, to present my case. I took the property that was being foreclosed on, had been in code violations for nearly a decade, and brought it back into compliance in forty-five days. I prepared a detailed rebuttal for the planning and zoning commission in three business days, while the city had nearly forty to build their case against me. I played by the rules, met every deadline, and engaged in good faith again, and again, and again. Yet each step, the rules have shifted, goalposts have been moved. The clearest example is this reconsideration. The motion was made by a member who was not present at the original vote. It was made a month later, and it came after actions had already been taken in reliance on the approval that the property was, that it was properly granted. Now, under Robert's Rule of Order, which applies when no other procedures are in place, three standards are directly on point in Section Thirty-seven. Now, quote, "The motion to reconsider can only be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side on the original vote. The motion to reconsider must be made on the same day the vote to be reconsidered was taken, or on the succeeding day, within a session of more than one day, and any vote which has called something to be done that is impossible to undo." So unless the city can point to a properly adopted procedure that extends different rules to planning and zoning, much like this commission has, this reconsideration was procedurally invalid. This defect is not a technicality, it is a due-process problem. It overturned a settled decision without lawful authority, and it ignored the voices of the citizens who participated. A dozen members of this community took time to attend that meeting. Every single one of them spoke in support of this case, and their testimony was clear. The commission's original decision reflected their input and the judgment of the body. With one improper motion, all of that was swept aside. Now, this is much bigger than 1219 Park. Citizens' commissions exist to give the public an independent voice in city government. They are meant to be respected, not overridden, whenever staff or leadership dislikes an outcome. Yet when a commission approves an application without the condition the staff wants, the staff pushes back, delaying, sparring procedurally, and even refusing to carry out their responsibilities in order to pressure the commission into reversing course. This is not a representative government. This is a clear power grab. If we allow this behavior to continue, our commission will lose credibility and become nothing more than rubber stamps, stripped of their purpose and their ability to represent the people of Sanford. This is about trust in our institutions. A city that bends or ignores its own rules to reach a preferred outcome cannot expect its citizens to trust the fairness of its process. Due process is not optional. It's the foundation of a legitimate government. And as a appellate body over planning and zoning, you have both the authority and the duty to correct this error. The city code makes clear that appeals from P&amp;Z decisions ultimately rest with this commission, and with that responsibility comes the power to ensure those decisions are made lawfully and fairly. The consideration was wrongful. It was made in violation of Robert's Rules by a member who had no right to make the motion, made outside the timeline, and after reliance, action has already been taken. It ignored the citizens who showed up to participate, disregarded the will of the body, and stripped me of my due process. I respectfully urge you to overturn the reconsideration with prejudice and restore the original approval, both to protect the integrity of the city's process and to honor the citizens who engaged in it. If we fail to correct this, the message is clear. Citizen input only matters when it produces the outcome city leaderships prefer, and this is not the Sanford we believe in, and I don't think it's the Sanford that you want to represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we speaking on it, or no? Okay, so, Chase, were you, I don't, were you here in the work session?
Yes.
Okay, because I already spoke to the commission about it, and Attorney Green spoke on the legality of it, so I hear what you're saying, but I agree, I'm sure that Attorney Green would have told us if there was something that was improperly done. I do not agree with what happened whatsoever, but she said that it was not overturned. And for the record, can you explain that again, Attorney Green?
Thank you. And Mr. Spoor, I do understand that you may not have been in the room. I wasn't watching you. You know, I sit at this table right here when matters are before the boards. I don't know where you were. There was a motion made, and the motion was made, I know you brought up Robert's Rules of Order. There are commission procedures that flow through to the other boards. Rule Thirteen, which sets forth reconsideration, allows...
Rule Fourteen for this commission.
Allows, Rule Thirteen, which flows down to all the other boards, unless the boards have a separate policy, which this board does not, allows for a motion for reconsideration. It must be made at the next meeting. Again, I don't know if you were in the room, but part of the discussion was, if it's going to be made, it has to be made at the next meeting, which it was. Pursuant to those rules, the motion can be made either by the person who supported the prevailing view, or was absent. Those are the two criteria. What I want to be clear about is that there was not a decision to overturn the decision. The decision was to reconsider, to clarify what the conditions are, and to make sure that there was clarity as to the adjudication of the application. It was continued, because as you do know, I think it was more like a four-hour meeting, and one matter had to be continued. So, it has been continued to the next meeting. At that meeting, there will be a very quick issue.
That's not what Bon even said. Sorry.
At that meeting, there will be, whether that, at that time, there will be a determination as to whether it's upheld, clarified, but quite frankly, I think that that is your most efficient route to go through. Because here's what's going to happen. If you're unclear as to what the conditions are or were, and then you start the development on this process, then you go to P&amp;Z in order to start working on this process. And now you two are in disagreement as to what the conditions were, what were the requirements. Guess where it's coming back to? P&amp;Z. Are you doing this now, two months later? Are you doing it now, three months, four months later? Why do the delay? Instead, if there is an issue, or concerns, or questions, as to what exactly, and you were at that meeting, right? So, you know there were, it's no aspersions toward you, the board, people were talking over each other, there were conditions that were trying to be proffered that no one could hear, and so now you're left in this rigmarole. It has to be clarified. And the quickest route for you, quite frankly, I don't represent you, but I'm telling you, the quickest route for you... the quickest route for you is to go through this process. Let it go through to the next meeting. Let the conditions be clarified, if there are going to be any. Then you know exactly what your marching orders are, and you're not wasting time arguing with P and Z as to what those conditions are. My intention is to be forthright with the law, to assist you in getting where you need to get to, make sure I'm upholding what's required by P and Z. That's my only dog in the fight, I promise you. Let that process go through, because I quite frankly think that's the most efficient way for this to be handled.
Attorney Green, respectfully, because I highly respect. But for the planning and zoning, I think the most efficient and quickest route would have been for the conditions to have been laid out and spelled out when he got approved. There should not have been any people talking over each other, going back and forth or whatever. This is this man's business. This, this every dollar, every day, every hour, going back and forth. Him being unclear and for us to say that, that is the quickest route, respectfully. The, it is, 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 and I don't want to use words unfair, because I'm exhausted tonight, and if I have to hear a rubber stamp one more time, I don't, I don't know how I'm gonna handle it. But for Mr. Spoor, going through this process, it is unfair for it to have been approved, and then us to now come back and say, "Well, they were talking over each other, and they did this, and it was unclear", and then approved it. Now, now we've gotta wait for another meeting to be noticed, with this is like a month out, for them to have conversation, and then it could still even then be unapproved. Or, you know, so I, that, that, that part, I have to go with what the law says, but I disagree when we say that that's the quickest, most efficient route, because it should have never been approved if there was no clarity, if it wasn't spelled out what the conditions were. Going back and forth makes zero sense to me.
Commissioner Britton, let me just say that I agree with you. You're not gonna get any argument from me. I sat on planning and zoning for a very long time. I think that there is some training that's needed. I, I, as you know, I've been in this position since May. It feels like May since eighty-nine, but since May. And there's some training that needs to occur with regard to how motions are made, how you listen to what's being presented, how to understand there is a different way that we conduct ourselves. You got a choice. You either wanna sit here, or you wanna sit there. And how you behave if you're on this side. There's some training. And so some things got lost in that process because the process did not go in the manner, quite frankly, that it should have. I, I can tell you, 'cause you can listen to it, and Mr. Spoor, you were there. Staff is presenting, presenting conditions, and there's motions being made while staff is trying to clarify conditions. Right? So what, what conditions are, what conditions are here? What conditions have been approved? And then it's voted on. So to that extent that it has caused, right, longevity in this process, that's never my intention. But again, as far, when I say the most efficient, it's the most efficient for where we are at this moment. That's my point. The most efficient as to where we sit right now. As amazing of the things that I can do going back in time is not one of them. And so for, for where we are, I would recommend going through the reconsideration process and then dealing with it from there.
At the last commission meeting, even then, a condition was added, and they're deleted all the time by the commission. They know how to do conditions, and you can pass it without condition. It was passed without conditions, it was voted unanimously without condition. When the vote was passed, they were not going over conditions. They were showing an image on the screen. We weren't going over conditions, we wrapped it up. So I, I disagree with that element. I think everything was presented. They rested on the fact that my documentation was incorrect and didn't even do anything further to talk about conditions. So the commission could have gone and said, "approved with conditions", they know how, we watched them do it. They chose not to, and they're allowed to put approval with no condition. What we're saying now is we don't agree with it, 'cause we're having a hard time piecing it together, so let's go back, and there is a chance of denial in a month.
I'll agree with you till I disagree with you, right? And I disagree with you as to what transpired at that meeting. I disagree as to the clarity of the conditions. And as a result, and mind you, I didn't make the motion, so I can only infer based upon what was said during the meeting as to what caused the motion. And what caused the motion based upon what was verbalized was the lack of clarity as to what transpired. Now, if you have people on the dais who's saying they confused, right? Who am I to say you're not confused? That, that's my, my position. So it has, the motion did pass. It is, was continued to the next meeting. I will work with you. I will make sure you have my information, so that as you have questions throughout the process, I am making myself available. And that is, quite frankly, the best that I can offer you is to make sure that I'm available to you as you have questions.
What authority does the city commission have?
At this point, it's, at this point, respectfully, it's not in the city commissioner's jurisdiction. It still lies with P and Z, because that motion was passed, and it has been set for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Spoor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience which to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, then we will go to Resolution thirty-four fifteen.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve Resolution number three, four, one, five, amending the pay and classification plan to create a temporary battalion chief of emergency medical services position in the fire department to assist with the transition of duties until the incumbent retires.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley, in her local agreement with Seminole County?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve, in her local agreement with Seminole County, an amount of five thousand, five hundred dollars to conduct a market study of feasibility of an airport product at the Sanford, Orlando Sanford International Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bastian Ansley, agreement with ALS Education?
Yes, Mayor and commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve the revised agreement with ALS Education LLC for school resource officer services at Elevation High School.
Any questions or motion?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Why are we funding an SRO for a charter school?
Required to by law.
Required to by law? I thought it was just public schools.
No. Charter schools are public schools.
Okay. So be it then.
Yeah, charter schools are, and they're funded by public money. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley, shuttle service agreement?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve the agreement with Winston Singh LLC an amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for shuttle services to and from downtown Sanford.
Move to approve. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley? The MOU with Osceola?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve the memorandum of understanding with the Osceola County Sheriff's Office, who is the designated Central Florida lead agency by enforcing laws regarding the Central Florida internet crimes against children.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley, budget transfer?
Yes, city staff recommends the city commission approve the budget transfer an amount of six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for this lift station cell service project for the supervisory control data acquisition system, also known as SCADA.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley, budget transfer for Fifth Street?
Mayor, city commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve the budget transfer an amount of two million, four hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars for the Arrow Lane and Fifth Street paving and drainage project.
Move to approve.
I got a lot of discussion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Discussion?
I'd have none.
That's Claudia's district, you better not question it.
I just wanted to see Patrick's face get red.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley? Mayor Clubhouse?
Okay, member, Mayor, members of the commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve miscellaneous change order items an amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents, and approve the amended guaranteed maximum price of six million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents for the construction of the Mayfair Golf Course Clubhouse.
Other than the, I don't know how much it actually costs to replace three bricks on that sign. I'm okay with it.
Okay, good, good to hear. Any other motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Bastian Ansley, budget transfer for expert witness?
Okay, Mayor, members of the commission. City staff recommends the city commission approve the budget transfer and purchase order of three hundred and forty-five thousand to cover your attorney fees for DSK Law Firm for Geographical Information Services, GIS Services, and groundwater modeling for the one-four dioxane expert witness support services.
Questions, motion?
Okay, I do have a question. Can you break down exactly what this is that we're paying three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for?
Either, either Brent or...
You wanted to make, I can explain it, I think, unless...
It's related to the, the expert testimony. Go ahead, Mayor.
So in our litigation with the responsible parties, Siemens and General Dynamics and somebody else, we have a mediation scheduled for November. Our engineer, or one of our engineering firms, has a business relationship with one of them. And so in abundance of caution, we have sought someone else, and so we have gotten what I consider, having talked with him a couple of times, a very good expert witness who can explain it very well, knows the science. You know, it's like this chemical and this chemical, it takes this long for this to happen, and this is what shows up here, and so it must have come from there.
So this, we would receive a return on our investment?
We hope we're gonna receive a very large return on our investment.
Okay.
But we, we have to have
Right.
the, the expert testimony and the work he is providing, sharing with the engineering firms to provide the plan that we think should be done for the cleanup, beyond just our, our work. But, you know, we've got to go forward.
Okay.
So do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bastian Ansley. City attorneys report.
Mayor, we do have an add-on item.
You want the chief to come down and brief you, because we just got it tonight?
Oh, we know what that is.
Yeah, we talked to that guy last time.
It's part two of what we already talked about.
They've already approved the first half, haven't they, chief?
He's already gone to sleep anyway. Oh, wait, there he is.
Oh, he has to go back there.
You shouldn't leave him hanging on the second half.
Okay. So the second half of the purchase to replace all our firearms to safer models?
Is that the gist of it? Okay, questions or motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bastian Ansley. Now, city attorneys report.
I just want to compliment you all for just the way that you handled a very difficult night. You, you stayed on task, you kept your composure, you understood the assignment, which is, as Commissioner Britton said, that we work for the citizens. And I saw that in your questions, in your interactions, making sure questions were answered. And so I just wanted to compliment you on that. As it relates to the letter that went out, I think moving forward, so the letter was prepared by our consultant. We did go over it, covering all the legal requirements. But next time, you know, we'll talk about whether the letter could be softer. Again, sometimes that's not an option, because there are legal requirements that must be in the letter. Where I will assist more going forward is, even though I was at the public hearing and the public meeting and all that, and making sure that there are possibly more opportunities, you know, there's gonna be those people who you have ten meetings and it's still never gonna be enough, but you can never, you know, deny the opportunity to do better. And so should we do this again, then I will be working with staff, which did an excellent job, to make sure we're communicating better.
Thank you.
And so that's my dedication to the process. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, city clerks report.
We do not have any applications for our boards. We ran it all on social media, and I did not get one application emailed to me. So I thought it was kinda weird, 'cause usually my emails packed full with them. So I asked Nico to run it again.
I don't remember seeing it.
And he, he ran it again this past weekend. Again, nothing as of this morning.
Are you sure that the email's coming through?
Well, I checked with IT and...
Run it again now, we've had that vote tonight.
I think it's in the IT world somewhere.
What did we say about...
Kathy, you got her email blocked?
Are you getting all the emails?
Yeah, they're all going to Kathy.
Commissioner Britton?
What did we say about the CDBG board? 'Cause we were asking about whether, if we have dedicated volunteers for that board, if they can stay on, like we approved for the Airport Authority, but I think it was under some different legal things. Are we allowed to extend...
I thought we were going to bring back the resolutions for each board to discuss that.
We can put it on the next work session. Yeah.
And can you email out the list of vacancies and maybe we can store somebody up?
Yes, I will. And we did have one, I don't know if anybody saw their email today. We had another one go off of Julie's Historic Preservation Board.
Okay. City managers report.
Nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, city manager.
All right, are we...
I'll wait for my turn.
Commissioner Britton, anything?
I, I haven't seen a meeting like this since the Hotel Motel Holiday Inn. That was my first meeting.
And that was the first meeting I attended that was like this.
Was that as much fun as this one?
Yes, that was the ALF Assistant Living Facility out at the marina. And we did differently, because as many, as many people that was opposed to that, the city commission voted on what they thought was best for the city of Sanford. And although one of my residents said that we were gonna vote how we wanted to anyway, we proved that wrong, that we cared about... Yeah, she's the one that said we need to be fair. But we showed that we truly value our residents, and I'm gonna echo Attorney Green and say, I just applaud you all for just you being amazing representatives. I sat on the other side and rolled my eyes at y'all, and it is a lot different sitting on this side.
Did you throw a footfall at us too?
And, and a bird, too. So just thank you all for everything, and I'm, you know what? Everything else can just wait. Y'all had a long night.
'Cause you need a nap.
I would point out that the last time that it went to like twelve-thirty, one o'clock, I was out on that side.
That was my very first meeting as deputy city clerk. And I thought, what on earth did I get myself into?
And you're still here.
That's when Larry Dale made me mad and I decided to run for office.
Wow.
Commissioner Britton?
Real quick, I wish they all still here, but I know they're still watching as though they're here. I think things also too, not only with what, you know, our lawyer said as far as we getting things out, but also people being more attentive. You know, if they're more attentive to what we got going on and coming to the meetings, they're able to see what we actually got going on. So hopefully, that will bring more of our citizens out, so they can see what we got going on, on a monthly basis. I just want to be able to thank, again, bragging on the picnic project. We gave away about, grossed about sixty families this past Friday. Again, for the men and the ones that don't know, please spread the word. We're partnering with the Health Department, and so on the twenty-seventh of September from nine to noon, we got a men's health huddle for prostate cancer. So all the men in here and the ladies, please let other men know. And then I want to also, I know I still got about... I was hesitant, but they're all gone pretty much now anyway, so. But I was a little hesitant, but I wanted also, with my five thousand that I still have in my account, I want to give three hundred.
How does he still have it?
I want to give three hundred to top kids for their fall festival. So...
For a public...
For a public purpose. For a public person, excuse me, a public person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Endless supply of money.
I swear it goes out there the time we do this.
This is four thousand, seven hundred.
Four thousand seven hundred?
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Commissioner Austin?
I don't even know what to say after that. I do want to commend Brent Johnson for his hard work and trying to solve some issues. I think last meeting I might have been a little harsh, but sometimes we get a little passionate up here, right, Commissioner Britton?
A little passionate.
I had something else, but, oh, are, are we doing anything for, for Norton's daughter's service?
Yes.
We are.
We need to, yes.
We are.
I'm sending a peace lily to the service.
Okay.
And then on our own.
I know that usually falls on.
The administration of just who works for him, we all put in and sent flowers to the house.
Okay, all right.
But I did see they would like a donation.
Have you collected money, you're done?
Yep.
Now, I know that they, they, I don't know if we even do it, I know they were doing something with giving to a.
Yeah, a couple of different downs.
Yeah, a couple of different organizations.
Yeah. Not sure.
We just do that personally.
We can pull off, call it that.
No, no.
Yeah.
We want to.
Okay, all right.
And then I would like an update at the next meeting on the negotiations for fire, and I would like an update on the lawsuit with the Henry. I hear whispers from other areas that, that I don't like, and I know you're not a part of that, Ms. Green, but I, I would like an update on that issue.
The Henry? Was that the DR right? The, the tax, okay.
And on a personal note, Thursday is one year anniversary of me not being able to walk again, waking up in Advent Altamont after going through a major stroke, and so I am grateful to be here tonight, even though I had to listen to y'all talk way too much. Y'all up here, not y'all.
You talk more than we did.
We're glad you're back too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we glad you're here, man.
Commissioner Austin?
I learned something new tonight, that people do pay attention to the point of noticing when I do this. Wherever you are out there, I apologize for doing that. Attorney Green, I had asked you about whether or not we could draft a letter, you were going to revise the letter that I wanted us to draft to Mayor Dyer and county manager. Oh, we've been playing phone tag, okay, great. We had our monthly Calno meeting this week at Decision Tactical, big shout out again to Brady and Pam for great presentations, to the mayor for kicking us off nicely, and Remo and Monique, wherever you are out there at Decision Tactical, thank you, we really appreciated that. I am now on the Florida League of Cities Intergovernmental Relations Mobility and Emergency Management Committee, and as such, will be spending more time building relationships with our legislators, making some trips virtually or in person to Tallahassee. So this week, I need to send us what the city of Sanford's legislative priorities will be, so fellow commissioners and mayor, if you have any thoughts on that, feel free to share.
Yeah.
Keep your hands, yes, home rule, rules.
Our priority is them to stay out of our business.
Stay out of our business, I agree. And shout out to Fire Inspector Kyle Jones, who came by and replaced all of my smoke detectors, and the only reason I mention that is because there might be some people like me who didn't realize that this is not only a free service, but when they replace your smoke detectors, the new ones they put in don't require new batteries and they're not going to chirp and bug the you-know-what out of you. Yes, so, not to give you too much business, but because I know he stays busy, it's a good thing, anybody out there needs their smoke detectors checked, possibly replaced, Kyle is the man, or whoever you assign. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, I'm going to throw a wrench into the whole process.
Well, that's nothing new.
Okay, so, you know the numerous times I've said we need to chip away at the milage rate, even a tenth of a mil. A tenth of a mil is about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it's less than point eight percent of our budget. I would like to go, at least go through the process of looking and seeing if we impose that, where would the money come from, and be able to consider that at our next meeting.
You're saying drop a tenth of a mil?
Drop a tenth, drop a tenth of a mil.
Did Megan copy?
No, did Megan do that?
Yeah.
No, I'm copying, I think it was Mayor Lassard, is.
Mayor.
Wasn't it you that said we've got to chip away at the milage rate? Wasn't that your mantra?
Mayor, my mantra was, at first place, that if everything's good, there ain't no trouble.
Okay.
That's exactly what Commissioner Delary said at Calno.
Yeah.
He stole it from me.
Yeah, I heard him say it to him.
Uh huh, now I know.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, we had to make hard decisions to cut out of the budget already, you know that. Now you're talking about six hundred thousand dollars? That's six police officers, that's six firefighters.
Well, I don't expect it.
That's half of a fire truck.
I don't expect it to all come out of one department's budget. I think we, we should do the, we should look at it.
We already did the process, that's, that was our job during budget in July.
Okay.
And we just saved the residents a fire assistance.
And we, and we even talked about, but we didn't mention it tonight, in lieu of a fire fee, possibly having to raise the milage rate.
What's your process? What's your thinking?
My thinking is, you know, I have been saying this all along and you always say, no, 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 y'all, as a group.
No.
Whenever I've, whenever I have brought up, we should chip away at the milage rate, oh, no, we don't, we shouldn't, in fact, sometimes it's been suggested we raise the milage rate. Looking at all of the things that people have written me over the last couple of weeks and looking at the budget even deeper, like, I think we need to do this.
Either that and/or, what we were talking about of putting out the information that the Florida League of Cities put out about the property taxes toolkit and better explaining to people why our milage rate is high, but ultimately taxes per person is still lowest. Took a while for me to get that, but I get it now and I can see some people still struggling with that. And they put a lot of good information that might assuage the fears out there about our high milage rate.
So you have some homework to do to come up with your six hundred grand and sell us.
No, Ms. Lindsey has some homework to do.
Don't, no, 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 no.
She has to confirm the numbers.
No, no, no.
And she's already, I've already talked to her about this, I know she's mad at it.
Don't put this on that wonderful lady.
She's tough too, because I started talking to her about where we could cut in the budget and she yelled at me.
Is that the former commissioner back there? I wanted to recognize Commissioner Randy Jones and to say happy birthday to him as well this evening.
We got to sing. We got to sing to him.
He must be running for office.
He could come play District One.
Okay, so. I came, I came here to enjoy the, enjoy the show, you remember when I told you it was going to be some of the.
Hey, by the way, this is your seat, you can have it. Welcome back.
I told you it was going to be some of the best times, lady, was that today?
And some of the worst times.
The best time you ever had is some of the most interesting, we'll call it.
And two strokes. Two strokes.
Tell us about this after we adjourn.
Is there, so is there any support at all to look at?
Probably not.
So you put us on the spot here.
Probably not.
Yes, Mayor.
Well, as a new person who doesn't know any better, I'd say, sure, let's look at it.
Can I just ask, do you want this in two weeks? Like, we're going to ask the departments six, seven hundred thousand dollars in two weeks from the twenty-second meeting? Is that what you're looking at?
No. Why?
Okay, that might be a little tough.
Tell them to pretend they're in Citizens Academy and they're doing that little budget game where they have to move money around.
Well, with all due respect, it has to be quick if you want it done for this, are you thinking about for this budget?
Yeah, he's talking about twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Before October one?
Yes.
Oh, my!